Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter.
I'm here.
Councilmember Austin Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Barry. Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Snapper.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
I understand that Councilmember Barry is out of town this evening and that he will not be joining us. Are there any additional council comments or announcements? Barry?
Thank you, Mayor Porter. This week someone asked me why I keep mentioning the need for the council to audit our city's financial functions. I thought it might be helpful for the community to understand my view of my job as a council member. As I understand the position, council members are responsible for formulating sound policies, setting strategic direction for the city staff, hiring a qualified city manager, and effectively supervising the city manager. The city manager is responsible for implementing the policies by managing the day-to-day operations, and in fact, council members should not be involved in the day-to-day operations of the city. However, council members need to ensure that the city manager operates the city within our established policies. Since we're not involved in the day-to-day activities, I, as a council member, can only do this by listening to the community members, by staying involved in visiting city offices and attending meetings, by asking questions of the community members and staff members, by establishing an effective management reporting system, and by implementing an effective independent audit and review program. Without independent audits and reviews, we may not know when our policies are thoroughly implemented until problems occur. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or announcements?
Just a couple of updates for the council. I was pleased to attend the Safe Tacoma meeting on Thursday of last week, and Chief Rakucci was there as well. The thing that was very gratifying about it was, though it was on the Maryland side of the line, as it were, we were in the company of many important officials and residents of DC. And I think that we're certainly starting to see the stakeholders coming together around this idea and hopefully giving life to the program that we have been talking about now for a while. The other update I want to provide is on the metro development issue. And in the current issue of The Voice, I've circulated the article that I wrote to my council colleagues, and it pertains to the redacted emails that we were briefed on in, I think, March. But I've tried to make it something that the public can see in the context of this whole review process, which has been going on for a very long time, I know. Now, we did have the walkthrough on May 23 with Ike Leggett, and that was quite successful. And the mayor has briefed us about some follow-up contacts she's had. What I am looking forward to doing is sitting down with Muriel Bowser, who's the new council member in Ward Four in DC. And I've been assured that Councilmember Valerie Ervin with the county council is spearheading that effort. So I will keep you informed of any dates and times that are circulated. And I'm keeping my fingers crossed that the metro development can still be amicably collaborated on between DC and Maryland, and that we can arrive at a solution that really fits this community.
Are there any other council comments or announcements? All right, seeing none. I just wanted to note for the record that I've issued a proclamation recognizing the contributions of Matt Corley, who was, until very recently, part of the management of our recreation department. He has since left, and we wanted to recognize his many contributions while he was on our staff. The next item on the agenda is the adoption of minutes. We have in front of us the minutes of May 10. Does someone want to move adoption?
It's moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of adopting the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are adopted. The next item on the agenda is public comment period. This is the time set aside on the agenda for comments that are not on our regular meeting, one item this evening. If you do have a comment on the second reading of the FY07 budget amendment four, would ask that you hold your comments until we get to that item. If you have comments on any other item or any other issue you'd like to bring before the council, now would be the appropriate time. I would ask, when you come forward, if you would identify yourself and if you would keep your comments to three minutes. Thank you. If you want to make a comment, if you would just go up to the podium.
Good evening, council members. Another guest.
Good evening.
I'm Mrs. Gordon. I'm here again because I'm having problems with renting and not getting the service I'm paying for. Since July of 2003, I reported about mice problems, and I still have these problems today. The only difference is that I have been harassed, threatened, and I can't seem to get any help from the city. I mean, this is really taking too long. I came to get the last report. It was not available to me. Also, I believe I spoke with Martha and Margie, and I recognize there's a problem of mice in Tacoma Park, but Mr. Barry has had this successfully treated. And he's come to my apartment, and he has seen the evidence. The inspector really doesn't seem to be wanting to clear this up. And I don't know what you can do, but I'm really frustrated with it, you know? I'm a widow, and I've had a death of -- I also lost my father close to the death of my husband, and I almost lost my mom. And, you know, I need time for me and to do personal things. I really shouldn't have to come here again with this problem, you know? I just need someone to do something for me.
Mrs. Gordon, remind me where you live.
I live at 7807 Lochne Avenue in Tacoma Park.
7807 Lochne?
Avenue.
Okay.
Yeah. I also had an attempted break-in, and there was a whole list of things that the inspector had written about, that she was supposed to come and check. Doors, entry of mice coming in through doors, faulty windows. She never really checked those things. Then I was being targeted for things like plant pots and buckets. I realized that I have to, you know, get rid of my husband's truck. But if you look at every building, there are many tenants with the similar things. So it seemed as though the inspection was shifted from the landlord to me. He is the one who is violating me. Please do something.
All right. Thank you. We will try and follow up with that. Appreciate the update.
Mayor Porter.
Yes.
In the absence of Mr. Barry, who's her council representative, I wonder if we could ask the city manager to give us an update on those inspections, because I believe this is at least the second time that Ms. Gordon has been here at the council with similar concerns. And I would just like to know if the inspector is finding evidence of mice in the apartment, and what steps are being taken to eliminate that.
I can actually share some of that information this evening. Councilmember Barry had shared with me, Mrs. Gordon, that you would be in attendance this evening. So I did talk to the staff earlier today. There was a complaint, I think most recently, before this year, filed in the fall of 2006. And the records in the county, because the inspections are being done by the Montgomery County Code Enforcement Staff, they inspected on October 4. The owner was issued a notice of violation at that time, and then there were multiple re-inspections, and the case was finally closed on January 4. They did their annual license inspection of Mrs. Gordon's building on April 23 of this year, and at that time, the inspector again noted evidence of mice infestation in Mrs. Gordon's, I believe it was her hall closet. Is that correct, Mrs. Gordon?
The hall closet. I showed him the stove.
Okay.
I showed him the hall closet, and I also showed him the behind the computer. She was living to ride that. I mean, it was clear.
Right.
I don't know why.
Yeah, there was a notice of violation issued to the landlord, and there was a re-inspection that was to have occurred on May 31. The staff did attempt to contact the county inspector today to get the copy of the report, I believe that Mrs. Gordon is seeking, and to get an update. Unfortunately, we were not able to do that before this evening, but there is a call in Mrs. Gordon to check and find out what the status of this matter is. Obviously, you still have concerns about the status of your unit. We'll continue working with the county to try to get your concerns resolved.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Yes?
Members of City Council, Mayor Porter. The gasoline powering this constitutional SUV we call the United States is citizen participation. Without citizens speaking out and making our voices heard through our vote and through you, our elected representatives, the republic would come sputtering to a halt. And when our constitution is threatened, as it is by this current federal administration, every citizen has a duty to speak out. Personally, I made an affirmation when I became a Peace Corps volunteer to protect and defend the Constitution, and any of you who have served have also taken the same oath. Under the Constitution, the president is to faithfully execute the laws. When a president refuses to do so, the constitutional remedy is impeachment. Whether it's lying to Congress to get us into a war, spying on Americans without a warrant, torturing prisoners in violation of the Geneva Convention, which is the law of the land, outing a CIA agent for political payback, suppressing the rights of minorities to vote, or perverting the Justice Department, so that there is one kind of justice for Republicans and a different kind of justice for Democrats, this administration has broken the law countless times. In addition, George Bush and Dick Cheney have attempted to usurp the powers of the other two branches of government to themselves. Rather than let the country fall into a constitutional crisis, Congress should impeach and let the office of president fall to someone who agrees to abide by the framework we've all consented to be governed by. I've written to Representative Van Hollen. I am one citizen. Tonight, I am asking that this city council consider passing a resolution to impeach George Bush and Dick Cheney. Together, our voices will be louder, our cause more compelling, to ensure, to quote Abraham Lincoln, "That government of the people, by the people, and for the people shall not perish from the earth." Thank you.
Could you identify yourself for the record?
Thank you. My name is Anita Berkham.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue. Just got a couple of things I want to bring up. One of them is, we need more people active if we're going to accomplish this thing of impeachment. We have to -- that's one thing as Americans we have to do, and as citizens of Tacoma Park. We have to be able to stand up and be counted. We cannot no longer sit in our living room on our couches and watch the news and say we're against the war. We have to stand up and be counted. If I can do it, in my condition, they can do it. I've got a bad back. I'm blind. I've got bad hands. There's no excuse. By any able-bodied person, cannot stand up and defend their constitution. Now, defending your constitution is also getting up and coming downtown to support what we're doing. We are trying to bring them troops home. We are trying to stop the war. Meanwhile, we've got a lot of able-bodied people out there saying, "I'm against the war, but I ain't got time to go down, or I'm too tired." Well, I'm not too tired, and I make time. I make time to go down. I've moved several times. I've moved several different events aside. I've canceled parties and stuff to go down to something that's more important than just a party. Now, we need people out there, and it would be nice if we could put it in the city newsletter. Tacoma Park is a good -- we're an activist city. We need to have our activists come out. If they think they're true Americans and they want to defend the Constitution, then come on out and be counted. To stand up, have the guts to stand up. If I can do it, I haven't been killed yet. If I can do it, they can do it. We need as many people as possible to come down, especially on the end of June, when we have the Serving for Justice campaign, protesting the death penalty. If you're against the death penalty, come on out. If you're against injustice, come on out. We need you. The second thing is, is I've noticed, when I was on my way over to the Safeway, there are some cars out there that stink. I don't know what they're burning in their engines, what they're digesting, but let me tell you, they smell worse than a turd. And I'm wondering if this city has any rules and regulations on the smell of some of these automobiles going by. If they don't, we need to do something about it, because people should be considerate of other people, because I almost got sick. Some of these cars coming down Maple and coming down Philadelphia, they, I'm telling you, they are real smellers. And there has to be something to pull -- either pull them off the road or get them fixed. Now, I have a friend of mine whose car acts up sometimes, but at least, even though he hasn't got money, he will at least attempt to get it fixed. But there are people out there, you hear their cars, they roar down the road like dinosaurs, and they're burning all kinds of god knows what in their engines, and they're making people sick. And if there's anything we can do to stop that, that's part of being an activist in Tacoma Park, to protect our environment. If there's anything we can do, we have to do it. Is there anything on the regulations, Mayor Porter?
Not that I know of.
Is there anywhere to get something passed?
Basically, there are not regulations in the city of Tacoma Park, but we can certainly look and see what there might be at the state or the county level to see if there's something we can do.
But if there isn't, can we get something passed to get them off the road? Or at least get a fine for them, or make them get them repaired?
Okay.
Repaired.
Yeah, I understand your point. Thank you, Pat.
Okay. Thank you very much. We need activists out there. Come on. Come on, stand up and be active. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ernie Weisman. I'm president of Tacoma Park Independence State Committee, and I live at 216 Philadelphia Avenue. On the agenda tonight, I noticed that the mayor had the proclamation for Matt Corley. We just wanted to go on record Tacoma Park Independence State Committee, which I represent, which we have several members of here, and said Matt has served as the committee's city liaison for many years, and in my experience, has been nothing short of a godsend. He's gone out of his way to contribute services we need from various city apartments, and has always been extremely capable go-to guy, and that's putting him mildly. In addition to his official work as city liaison, Matt has put in many additional hours fulfilling the numerous tasks necessary to ensure that the annual Fourth of July parade and fireworks program was a success and has been a success each and every year. Everything from working the yard sale and helping out in other fundraising endeavors, monitoring vendors, to announcing the evening program, working as parade as a division director. In a nutshell, the Tacoma Park Independence State Committee will miss having such a dedicated city liaison who has performed at the level that Matt Corley has over the years. We're extremely saddened by his departure and feel this is a great loss to the city as well as the community overall. We're hoping that if you can find somebody of Matt's caliber, we're going to need that as liaison to step up to his duties. Also, being a longtime resident of Tacoma Park, my father was city councilman from '78 to '82, I noticed the mayor put up a proclamation. I was wondering, why isn't there a resolution from the entire council? I had written Councilman Austin Lane three weeks ago, when I first heard of Matt's departure, that he was leaving, and I had no response there. And I'm a little disappointed by the city council. I mean, you have somebody that's worked in this city for 25 years, and I've never heard a bad spot against him. Never has Matt said no to any assistance needed by anybody. I've got three kids that have been in city programs, and he has gone out of his way to help us and to help the kids in this community for almost 25 years. And I'm just a little disappointed.
My understanding is that that was Matt's preference.
Well, I think it should be incumbent of the city council to disregard that and give him the highest accolades possible, because he deserves it.
I would suggest, if you have your comments written down, we could...
They're in a rough draft. I can email them to you.
Could you email them?
Yeah.
I think we would be happy to send them to Matt along with the...
Well, we had a little ceremony to honor Matt yesterday at Jack Lee, and we gave him a couple of proclamations as well as similar comments, so he has something in writing from us.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Can I just address the point that he raised about contacting me? I did forward your email to the city manager, and she indicated that it was her proper domain to take care of staff matters and that the council was really...
Well, if you'd like to have something back, you know, I wrote to you personally. You could have sent, you could have emailed back that she was going to look into it, and that I could have had...
I'll be happy to forward.
...the city manager, but I haven't had any in three weeks.
I'll be happy to forward her response. Yes?
Hi. My name is Michelle Bailey, Sherman Avenue, and I'm here to support the council members in passing a resolution to impeach Bush and Cheney. And I also want to say something about our website, tacoparkIBC.wordpress.com. We have the draft resolution. We have a blog. We're encouraging people to check out the news stories that we are posting. I'd like to give a very quick update on the latest news. We now have seven congress members now supporting Kucinich in his introduction of articles of impeachment against Cheney. And those two members are Barbara Lee and Lynn Woolsey. So we're very happy about that. And I also wanted to mention that Alexandria is working on a similar resolution. And I think, you know, there's always been a little competition between Maryland and Virginia, so I'm thinking, you know, don't let them beat us to this. So, and let's see, we have our first county, Tompkins County, New York. And I'd like to offer also a history flashback. Elizabeth Holtzman has written a new book on the impeachment of George W. Bush. And back when she was on the impeachment panel, the second article of impeachment rested on the concept that removal is warranted when a president abuses the powers of his office so seriously that his actions jeopardize the rights of Americans or subvert the operations of the government. The use of warrantless wiretaps by President Nixon fell among the abuses in this category. So did the so-called enemies list by which President Nixon ordered IRS audits of people who opposed his policies on Vietnam War. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Lisa Moscatello, and I live on Cockrell Avenue. I just want to add one thing about the impeachment resolution that's related to what Michelle just said. She mentioned Elizabeth Holtzman's book, and I've been emailing with her, and she's very interested in what we're doing here in Tacoma Park, and she's offered to help hold either a phone conference or a video conference with mayor and members of the council to talk about that. So I just wanted to let everybody know that that's something that's available to us. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Mark. My name is Mark Hassel. I wanted to comment on the rent stabilization proposal that is in the packet for consideration this evening. I didn't get a chance to look at it until this morning, so my comments will be a little bit general. But in looking at where all this is headed, it looks a lot like the council's rearranging furniture rather than really tackling the issue of affordable rental housing in the city. If you look at the combination of the capital improvement process and the hardship process, it's really not significantly simpler. It just takes up less room in the code, because things aren't repeated twice. And that's not necessarily bad, but it's really not accomplishing a whole heck of a lot. I'd also report that earlier today, I spoke with Michael Weiner, who's counsel for Southern Management. He informed me that, after speaking with Ken Sigman, he had originally intended to hold back on filing suit against the city until after his client's hardship petition reached a final bottom line. But he said he's going to separate the two and file suit separately, so that, I'm told, will be coming shortly. And that'll attack the breadth and width of rent control, from what I understand. I also spoke with fellow Chris, the real estate agent from Marcus and Milichamp downtown. I apologize for not remembering his last name, but he's addressed the council before. And he was asking me about what's happening with rent control. And I explained the status quo to him. He said that, although it's true that none of the major players who were looking at condo conversion before are still looking at that, so that's not as an immediate threat to Tacoma Park rental housing as it was. What's going to happen is that the true economic value of a rental unit in Tacoma Park is probably, he thought, between $50,000 and $70,000, because when you look at the return you can get from the rent you can charge, that's about all that makes sense to pay for it. I actually think that's on the high side, but so be it. What's going to happen is, if values drop to $60,000, $70,000 per unit, and they're now $100,000, $110,000 per unit, you're going to have a lot of owners who are upside down, and they're not going to have money to fix up places, and they're not going to be able to sell them. And you're going to have a different kind of problem in the city. Also, by combining the capital improvement and the hardship petition process, you create a disincentive. I don't have time to explain it all now, but you actually create a disincentive to putting any money into capital improvements, because whereas currently you have a shot at getting 100% of your money back out, with this, there's also a real possibility you'll be able to get less than 100% of your money back out. So why make a capital improvement that the law doesn't absolutely hold a gun to your head and require you to do?
Can you wind up, Mark?
I will hook up two quick points here. One is, you're going to be looking tonight at percentages of CPI to apply to annual increases, and I think also to adjustments to the net operating income under this fair return theory. They should be higher. If you're not addressing that, you're not addressing what landlords need to be able to provide half of any rental housing at all in Tacoma Park. And finally, the council hasn't considered the following scenario. If a landlord owned a building in 1990 and made $60,000 a year from it, from managing it and his profit on the rents, after 17 years...
Can you shorten your scenario a bit?
Yes. After 17 years, the buying power of what he's allowed to make on that property will have gone down by about a sixth. And I don't think the council actually decided they wanted to decrease landlords' incomes. But that's exactly what you're doing. You need to give a lot more thought to what you're doing here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Sabrina Barron. I'm the president of Historic Tacoma, and I understand that this evening in the city manager's report, you're going to be hearing about a letter that the Executive Committee of Historic Tacoma's Board of Directors sent to the mayor, members of the city council, and city administrators dated the 1st of June 2007. And in that letter, we requested that the city withdraw a proposal that the city had made to the state highway's administration in a letter dated January 8, 2007, to study the possibility of putting a roundabout at the intersection of Carroll and Ethan Allen Avenues, also known as Maryland 410 and Maryland 195. There's several problems with that request that went to state highways. For starters, the list of affected property owners given in that letter is a list from 1985. It's a 20-year-old list of affected property members. That letter also mentions nowhere that this location is in the middle of the historic district, the National Register Historic District in Tacoma Park. And the historic district had been into the master plan, clearly states that historic streets and roads are an important part of the context of the historic neighborhoods. There's also been no public discussion, at least with the residents affected property owners of whom Historic Tacoma is now one. The person whose private property, not Historic Tacoma, but a private resident whose property would be most dramatically affected, not contacted, not even listed in any way. So we're asking that this proposal be pulled back at this point in time, that within 90 days, the city hold a public meeting where all affected stakeholders and property owners can hear about what the city is proposing and can express their concerns. We've also come up with a list of options that might provide mitigation for traffic and other concerns there that are far less drastic. I'd be happy to share with the council. We ask city staff to come to our board meeting and make a presentation on this request. and we were told at that time that there wasn't enough information available to do that, and that's something with which I concur. There is not enough information provided for this to be going forward at this point in time. So I would just like to reiterate, reiterate the request to withdraw this proposal at this point in time until everybody's been properly moved right and more information can be input into the process. Thank you.
Sabrina, would you be able to email to the city clerk the suggestion?
I can hear what you're saying.
Okay, that would be great, thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Jim Jarboe, I'm a Tacoma Park volunteer, fire department. I'm here with two hats on. One is the Independence Day Committee, and I echo the many, I'm talking about Matt Corley, the many contributions he's made to the Independence Day Committee in the twenty-four-some years he's been here. But I also like to mention on behalf of the fire department, the babysitter's program, I know Matt for the twenty-four years plus, he's been a big help through the volunteer fire department with the babysitter's program, CPR training for the citizens, as well as summer programs that we kind of work together as a team. And anytime that we needed anything, help from the rec department, Matt was the person to go to. And I just want to personally, not only, you know, let you all know, which most of you know that, but as the people out there in the community, that a lot of people, they don't know that do these things around here, and again, just want to thank for a job well done.
Thank you.
We know Alguetti, 7213 Central Avenue. I actually came for another issue, but I, I hadn't been in the parking lot behind this building for probably six or seven months, and in driving in, I noticed that literally every, every parking space in the lot has a sign on it. And I've been before this council, I've listened to this council over the years at various points, speak about the proliferation of signs in this city and how difficult that is. And I look around the walls, and I, I look at the design that was incorporated into this building, which is to reflect in effect the days of the eighteen nineties when the city was founded, and where I doubt that there was much of a proliferation of signs. And it seems to me that, is that really necessary? I mean, is it really necessary? Do you need a sign on every parking space? I mean, who does that? This is a liberal city for God's sakes. You know, you people talk about environmentalism, you know, I mean, here you've got a sign on every parking space. You know, this is not a, it almost seems like the city more concerned about control when you do that. Everything is, it's not a bad idea. Yeah, if you want small cars, and I'm sure you've got that defined someplace in the code, because otherwise it's even a meaningless sign. But assuming that you've got it defined someplace in the code and that we understand what a small car is, it seems to me that, that you presented it, it's, in many ways, like this building, it's a, it's a good idea but a poor execution. Okay, so I would suggest to you that you take another look at that. Let me talk a little bit about why I did come tonight. And I, outlook is such a wonderful thing, it lets you kind of keep a record of your timing and so on. About a year ago, a little bit more than a year ago, I came to the council and raised the question about the Sam Abbott Community Center, and the fact that you told me there's going to be a sign out there. And I ride past, and I, you know, I think about that because about a hundred citizens paid for the original sign in this city because it represented something. These are your, you know, maybe some of them, many of them don't live here anymore, but these were your constituents, the constituencies, your predecessors, who came and thought that something was important. You voted, you voted to put the name on the building, you haven't executed it all. And I came the last time, I said, well, the least you can do is put, put the fact of what this building is on the agendas of the meeting. And the city administrator said, sure, we can do that. Well, you know, here I am, a year, more than a year later, that hasn't happened either. I mean, what's the story? I know Kathy, you voted against it when, when the building was...
Actually, I voted for it.
You voted for it. God bless you, you represented your constituents, thank you. But you know, I do wish, I do wish that you guys could just do that, or at least let me ask the question, why haven't you done it? It's been a long time.
I think that this is part of the whole issue about signage on the building. I don't know...
Well, you got the signs out in the backyard, for God's sakes. You got them on every parking space, haven't you?
Right, right, but the...
I mean, we could put up signs, we know that.
The, the signage around and outside the building, well, maybe not outside, but certainly interior in the building, there's a lot of ADA issues that had to be incorporated into that signage. I wonder if the, the city manager could give us an update, because I know this is something that she's been working on for quite a long time, and it, it is quite a bit more complicated than it looks like on the surface.
No, the interior signage, Mr. Alguetti, has gone out to bid. I believe the other point that you raised, though, is you would like to see on the actual agenda where it would say something to the effect of auditorium, community center, Sam Abbott Citizen Center, is that...
I was simply reflecting what you agreed to do more than a year ago.
I think the city clerk is, is in attendance this evening, and unless anyone has any objection, we can certainly make that change with next week's agenda.
But what about the exterior sign? Because I know that there have been some discussions about exterior signage. Right now, there's just a banner, like a temporary banner across the front of the building, there's no formal signage. And I know that that's something that we have been planning to do, and that would, as we agreed, have, you know, the Sam Abbott Citizen Center name along with the other identifying things on the...
There are two different signage issues. One is the interior signage, which, as I just mentioned, is out to bid. I think the other part of the signage was part of the wayfinding gateway signage, and I can check with the director of community development. There was part of a broader group of signage, and I know part of that process were signs that were scheduled to go on some S H A property, and we've been unsuccessful in getting their permission. I believe Ms. Daines's intent was to go ahead and proceed with some of the other signage that would not be held up with issues with S H A, but I can confirm that with her, Mr. Alguetti, and get back to you tomorrow if you'd like.
I appreciate that. I would also assume that you have checked with the original resolution when the sign, when the signage was approved by the mayor and council, which specified the size in relationship to other words.
Yeah, my recollection is, see, they were to be of equal size, if I remember. My recollection is that the lettering was to be of equal size, is what the resolution called for.
Yes, thank you very much.
That's my recollection also.
May I just, if I could, just impose one more. Why did you put a sign on every parking space? It's phenomenal to me. It's astonishing.
I don't think there's a sign on every parking space, but...
I would think he's pretty close there.
You gotta, you gotta admit, it's pretty, right, thank you.
The issue of the signs on every parking lot was actually one that was worked out between the planning office and my office. The reason they're there is for liability reasons. When we added the sidewalk to get access from Philadelphia Avenue to the community center in, in behind the library, we reduced the width of the parking lot by four feet. Those parking lot lanes now do not comply with the standard size for parking lots, so it was the recommendation that we put signs at each space so that every car that enters that lot knows that it's at their own risk that they're parking there. It's up to their own interpretation, there's no enforcement. It's simply covering the liability aspect of if someone were to park there in a vehicle that was large and then said, I just assumed it was a normal parking lot, you guys didn't say anything other, and you backed out and hit another car, and they want to make the city responsible. This simply provides information to the parkers that the lot is smaller than normal. We don't know how long that situation, it may be a permanent situation. We always look for guidance from the council on that. That was the assumption that if we put signs at the entrance, there would be an issue of people not knowing as they entered the parking lot or actually, they actually parked, which sizes were space, regular and which sizes were not. So in the interest of as much information as possible, we put them on each lot. These aren't large signs, these are fairly small signs. I think they're signs that, you know, don't, don't necessarily clutter the parking lot, it's not a aesthetic area by any means, but it is, the reason it's put there is for, is for liability.
Places are not aesthetic areas unless we aspire to make them aesthetic areas. I would suggest to you that you take another look at that. God help us all, if your attorneys control everything, and shame on you.
I think if you wanted to park in an area that didn't have signs, the front parking lot, except for a couple of spaces that are designated for persons with disabilities, don't have signs on them.
I'm Belle Ziegler from 109 Sheridan Avenue, Tacoma Park, and former director of recreation, and I'm here mainly to commend all the years of service that Matt has given to the city and all the community, as every organization that I know of has come to me or called me and said, why is Matt leaving? That he has done so much for the community, and we don't know what we'll do without him. And actually, for the years that Matt worked under the department, when I was here, I don't recall any time that we had any problem, because he always was able to fill in any place that we needed him. He did everything from A to Z. He started out as a part-time worker while he was in college and ended up as a senior manager. He was a playground coordinator. There wasn't any position, I don't think, that he didn't hold in the rec department. And I just hope that the mayor and council will certainly give him the consideration and the recognition that he deserves, because he was here a long, long time. I don't think any of the groups that he worked with in the city have ever found fault with him. I have never heard anything. Why people call me, I don't know, but they do. They have all commended Matt. At the little gathering yesterday, there were numerous groups represented all commending him for his years of service. And so I sure hope that all of you back him up and give him the recognition that he deserves. Thanks.
Well, thank you, Belle, and I appreciate everyone else who's spoken in support of Matt, and perhaps we can think of a way to, to make sure that he knows of the recognition and support that has been forthcoming from the community. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening?
I, I would just like to say that I do wish this council had had an opportunity to do what we requested, which was pass a resolution honoring Matt's service. And this is not unusual, though. Some requests by council are not honored, and I think what we're seeing now, you know, albeit the city manager's purview, is some of the fallout from the decision. I'm getting complaints about the chess club not being staffed properly, and I know with the events that we have relied on Matt for, we are similarly falling short. So I do appreciate very much what Matt did for this city, and I, I do wish that the council's request to have this on the agenda had been honored.
Well, as I said, my understanding is that that was Matt's preference. Yes?
My name is Nick Moscatello. I don't have any written statement, so I may ramble. I do want to make a comment about the political situation in our country. If you remember back in the Clinton administration, when the Congress was trying to get an impeachment proceeding against the president, it was like a feeding frenzy of people like Henry Ho, Tom Delaig, Newt Gingrich were frowning at the mouth to nail Clinton to the wall for his indiscretion and lying to a grand jury. Other than lying to the grand jury, which a married man getting on television admitting he's cheating on his wife is not something he's readily willing to do, so he lied, which is unforgivable. The crime he committed, or the charge that he was initially sent to the, to the court, was plain and simple stupidity on his part. John Dean, who was the White House counsel back in the Nixon administration, a Republican, has written a book called Worse Than Watergate, and it's his description of the, the policies, the attitudes, the misdirection of this administration is far worse than anything that was going on during the Watergate hearings. I, at one time, was trying to figure out statements that President Bush has made, little clips that I was going to make a list of, you know, starting with, I looked into his eyes and saw his soul. Military action has been completed, mission accomplished, Brownie, you're doing a good job, you know, and it goes on and on. A month or so after nine eleven, I read an article somewhere, I don't remember, and the author was saying, I have a quote that I can't verify, so it's really hearsay, but in an unguarded moment, Karl Rove said, President Bush thinks of the American electorate as a bunch of ten-year-olds. That's undocumented.
Can, can you wind up...
But it explains pretty much how his attitude, his arrogance, his disdain of the American public has been realized these six, seven years.
Thank you.
So, can I just wrap it up?
Certainly.
Tacoma Park has a reputation in the metropolitan area as one of the premier communities in this area, and many communities throughout the country are joining in this effort to try to get an impeachment proceeding against the president and vice president. I would hope that this city council will join in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak this evening? Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? All right, seeing no one, we will draw the public comment period to a close and move on to the city manager's update.
Thank you. Just a couple items this evening, sorry, Ms. Ziegler laughed, but she had asked me to get clarification from the council on a matter of importance to the Independence Day Committee. I think as the council is aware, the city has historically used the Hyattville Bandstand for the Independence Day reviewing stand, if you will, and the council and other elected officials from various jurisdictions. The Hyattville Bandstand is no more, it's basically sort of fell apart, and so the Independence Day Committee, and council member Siemens, who's a member of that committee, may want to add to my comments, but basically has been sort of struggling to figure out what we do without the Hyattville Bandstand. So I know Ms. Braithwaite had contacted a company to get a quote, the name of the company was provided to us by council member Siemens, and basically the cost for renting a stage, and they are at a premium, obviously, on the Fourth of July, is about twenty-nine hundred dollars, and a tent to cover the stage would be an additional six fifty for a total of just over thirty-five hundred dollars. The other option, if we don't proceed with leasing a stage and a tent, would basically be to try to find a location where we could basically essentially set up chairs, if you will, for a reviewing stand. I would certainly suggest that probably be covered in some way, given the, the heat of the sun. But one of the questions that I had for the council is, the Independence Day Committee has an annual allotment of about eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. As of today, there had been about forty-five hundred dollars charged to that account, and I don't know what other expenses they would incur before June 30th, but I think one is just getting some feedback from the council in terms of your own comfort level and that of perhaps the county and state officials who typically join us for our Independence Day Parade, and whether or not you feel that we should basically lease a stage and a tent. And I, if you do, I think there's a strong likelihood that the Independence Day Committee would likely run over the allotted funding in this year's budget. Councilmember Siemens, is there something you'd like to add, that you're certainly very familiar with this issue?
Yes, I appreciate your bringing this forward. I didn't know this was going to be on the agenda, so I didn't bring any material with me, but I think there are two issues, and I'd just like to restate them, I think you've stated them already, but I just want to make it clear, there's two decisions. One is, in lieu of getting anything, we don't have the Hyattville Bandstand anymore, so the question is, do we want the... have the Hyattsville bandstand anymore. So the question is, do we want the VIPs to sit at ground level with or without an awning over that? Or do we want to rent a platform that will be slightly raised above the street as the bandstand always has been? And with the raised platform, then that could also be with or without the awning over top. You know, Barb has mentioned the quote that she's gotten for a stage to do that. Yesterday, I spoke with the organization that supplied the tents for the Jazz Festival, and they indicated that they would also be willing to submit a bid for something. But I would assume it would be in approximately the same price range as what Barb has gotten from this company. So the one question is, you know, what is really adequate for the state representatives and the other people that we're inviting to review the parade? And then the other issue is, and the reason this came to Barb is, that our, the budget of the committee in the past has never included more than a couple hundred dollars for the bandstand. And so the concern is that there is not going to be sufficient money this year, since this is an unexpected expense, there is not going to be sufficient money to absorb something that's in the neighborhood of $3,000. And so those are kind of the two decisions that the committee has asked the council to make. You know, kind of what's the minimum acceptable for our community leaders that we invite to the parade, to review the parade? And then is the council willing to help with the financial support to make that happen?
No, Bruce?
Is there someone else for you?
I don't see anyone else.
Okay. Just a quick reminder that before we used the Hyattsville bandstand, we had one that was, I believe, almost identical to that one. And ours fell apart a number of years ago. And that's why we used Hyattsvilles. And I believe at the time, I remember that the cost to replace it was approaching $100,000. So that's not necessarily an option that we want to go to. But I think in the meantime, we need to provide something that is comparable in type of facility that that provided for the various people on the reviewing stand. So I would think that we would want to go forward with authorizing the city manager to do whatever's needed to come up with some extra money and provide that to the Independence Day Committee for a raised stage and a canopy. And then think about, for future years, coming up with something that we might be able to own rather than rent that would be multipurpose. And maybe that kind of folds into the discussion with the consultant about what might be considered for this room and whether anything that might be used as part of a design for this room could be multipurpose and used for that. I think that all kind of goes in there. But in the meantime, I think we need to do what's necessary for this year.
You had said how much of that was the canopy and how much of it was the stage? I can't remember the figures.
The majority of it is the stage. Of the $3,550, $2,900 was the stage, and the $650 was for the tent or the canopy. And certainly, Councilmember Siemens has another name. We'd be happy to try to follow up on that.
Is the council willing to consider simply a canopy and perhaps a tarp on the ground with folding chairs on it?
I am.
No. I think the concern that the committee had is that at ground level, people that walk along or stand in front of the VIP area would block their view of the parade. I think that in lieu of a tarp, we could probably use the ground-level platform that the Public Works has, which is basically several sheets of plywood framed in with two-by-fours.
There are ideas for the up there.
Ah, that was a thought.
Well, my thinking on this is that the $3,000 could definitely be better used some other way. And I certainly do want the dignitaries to feel welcome and to feel accommodated. But I think that price tag, given our budget and the many things we could do with that amount of money, and just, you know, supporting another arts project, it would go a long way towards that. So I could certainly see spending the money on the tent. And possibly the tent could be suspended so that it was higher than usual. And that would give the elected officials who were sitting there better visibility. And I'm certain that the police department would ensure that no one was sitting in front of the viewing stand. So I really don't see it as essential that there be that raised platform. And I'd like to see the city consider something more economical in the future.
I'm flexible, and I don't have a particular opinion one way or the other on the money. But I wonder, you know, we have the Jazz Festival and the Folk Festival. The Folk Festival set up wood platform stages for the day. Is that new lumber? Or do they store that lumber from year to year?
Some of it is stored, some of it is rented. But I can tell you that we're running into a state problem with Hyattsville. I coordinate the street festival. I counted on that stage.
Maybe you could use a microphone for the audience at home.
Well, I don't want to get too, I mean, we have a very full agenda tonight. I don't want to get too deeply into future. So why don't you just finish your statement?
Yeah. Basically, my suggestion to solve the problem would be to see if the, it's right at the corner of Old Cowal and Maple. And I believe the parade makes that turn or could make that turn, where it's like the Eco Village. I forget the name of the property that is right now. It's across from Big Bad Wolf. I would suggest that you get a tent which would easily stake on that property and cordon off the area directly in front so people wouldn't stand in front of the dignitaries. And I agree with Joy. Spend a couple hundred bucks on a kind of reception that would occur in the back of the tent, the dignitaries. But I agree with you, $3,600 for, you know, if you put the amount of butts, divide that into the $3,600, you know, it's an expensive proposition. And again, we could do a lot better with that money. You will honor the dignitaries that are there. Some of them will be, of course, yourselves. But they know, I'm assuming, I think I know the company, they know that there's a shortage of these things. And they know that on the Fourth of July, everybody needs them. And they stick it to you. So, you know, I don't blame them for doing that because they got the goods. But on the other hand, I think we could set up a reviewing stand that would be really snazzy without spending anywhere near that sum of money.
I'd certainly like to try it.
If I'm assessing the will of the council correctly, there are three members of the council in favor of a tent, but no platform. One council member in favor of both. I don't know where Terry stands. Two in favor of both?
No, I just wanted to understand. It sounds like the issue is the money. And so maybe getting this other quote might be helpful. If they're in the same ballpark, obviously, that is going to be unacceptable. I was shocked when I heard the amount that they're asking for.
Well, I think that's probably true, that they know on the Fourth of July, they've sort of got you. So what are you going to do?
They also know there's a limited amount of these available in the city, in the whole Austin area.
Yeah, I'm sure. I'm sure. So...
But this guy knows me now because I talked to him yesterday. So I'm sure he'll give you a better friend.
We break big time.
Yeah. So maybe we should, maybe we should instruct the city manager to pursue other possibilities for a platform. But if she's not able to lower the cost significantly, that we simply go with a tent and some appropriate placement consulting with the Independence Day Committee on the placement. Yes?
If I may just ask, and I want to belabor this, obviously, it is a fairly hefty price tag. Is there some dollar amount that those councilmembers who have concerns, so that what I'd like to be able to do is go ahead and get the name of the company from Councilmember Siemens. We'll make contact tomorrow and certainly can try to make some other calls. I believe Ms. Sigler had also made quite a few calls on her own as well. But if there's a dollar amount that basically we cross, it gets the council into kind of a heartburn situation, that would be helpful for me to know. Obviously, Ms. Sigler, in her role with the Independence Day Committee, would really like to see this issue resolved. And I do think if we're going to, whether it's renting an awning or a tent or renting a stage times kind of of the essence, I'd like to try to be able to resolve this issue this week and let the Independence Day Committee know where things stand.
It sounds like the, not to go in excess of like $1,000 of the current allocation. Is that same reasonable?
Same reasonable. Thank you. I appreciate that. The other issue, I have two more issues, and I'll try to be quick. I think Ms. Barron, on behalf of Historic Tacoma, had also, had kind of framed the issues that were contained in her letter of June 1st. I had heard back from some councilmembers individually about their thoughts on this issue. But obviously, I'd like to get a sense from the majority of the council, whether you wish for staff to withdraw the requests that we submitted to S H A to evaluate a roundabout. I would like to just make clear that the reason that the letter was addressed to S H A specifically on that issue is the individual to whom we sent it basically is sort of their roundabout person. That's all that that individual does. And certainly, the letter did cite that the city was, you know, interested in perhaps other pedestrian safety issues. If the council does choose to proceed, I don't think that's necessarily binding to say that the council is committed to that. It was just to explore the feasibility of putting a roundabout in that location. So I don't know if the council wishes to consider this and provide some direction next week, or if you'd like to provide some direction this evening.
If I could just start off by saying that I understand the concern that led the staff to send the letter, because the council did have a discussion of whether we should proceed with a number of traffic calming issues. And this was one of them. And the direction to staff was that we needed to consider this further. I also understand the concerns that Sabrina raised about this sort of coming out of nowhere and the sense that she got from the letter, that this was sort of a done deal. My suggestion is that we sort of do a two-track process. One, that we ask State Highway not for what's in the current letter, but for general information on traffic flow and whatever data they might have about that intersection. And to take a look at whatever options they might think are feasible. And that we include the options that Historic Tacoma has developed in that discussion. And the second piece, that we move ahead with the public participation process, that we talk to Historic Tacoma and the Business District and the residents in that area about what their perception of the traffic concerns are and what their perception of what might be some solutions to those concerns. And that we move forward on both of those tracks. Bruce?
Yeah, I think part of the difficulty stems from the fact that many people, including probably all of us, didn't understand that the reason that this letter was phrased the way it was and went to the office that it did was that that office deals only with circles and roundabouts, that S H A office. There were, there have been, there has been outreach to other offices in S H A about other options for the junction. So that when you look at this letter in isolation, you think, gee, this is the only option being considered. In fact, it isn't. It's only phrased this way because the request is in to get more information about what S H A might consider about the viability of a roundabout in that location. And I think we need to keep this letter in, we haven't had a response yet on the letter. I think all we're trying to do is get information on any number of options. And we'll get it from this office. We'll get it from other offices in S H A and begin to gather the information. And as the mayor suggests, begin to talk with the stakeholders. I think it's also worth pointing out that the letter, my understanding of the letter is that it only referenced a survey from 1985. It did not talk about stakeholders from 1985. It provided an updated list of information on possible stakeholders. And I know that a number of people feel that that list was not adequate. And I've already spoken with Sarah Daines, and she's in the process of expanding that list and providing that information to S H A as well.
I agree with Bruce and just really am excited that we are finally getting some attention from S H A on this. I think the various Byzantine ways that things move through S H A may cause for concern. But this issue goes back as far as Dan Burden, and that was before Barb came. So I would say his visit was four or five years ago, where he stood people either in the road or near the road. And we talked about a traffic circle and various other options. The council has been dealing with the junction traffic issues and pedestrian safety for a number of years. And people are really expecting a solution already. But this is really the first step to consideration of options. Right now, we don't actually know what would be feasible there. And I would really like to get that information before we do have the public dialogue, because I think people will be asking a lot of questions about our potential solutions. And at this point, we don't have the answers.
Carrie?
Thank you, Mayor Porter. Surprises cause problems. When we surprise the community, the council hears about it. And then we're scrambling like tonight to try to understand what's going on. When I surprise my boss, my boss gets upset. I just think it would be helpful to be, to feel like I was a little bit more in the loop on things like this. And I think the same feeling is what I'm hearing from the community, to know that we're going to start looking at that intersection and maybe have some kind of a public announcement, if not a public meeting, to talk about the fact that we are starting now to look at possible solutions for that intersection. And then to include the community in those discussions before we make the requests for the studies to come in. As far as what I think should be done, I think we should do the studies, if not just a roundabout. It's hard for me to see how that's going to work in that intersection. But to see what the alternatives are from the experts who can, who better understand highway design than what either I do or the person who designed the intersection to begin with.
Kelly?
I agree with what Bruce and Joy said.
If I could just add briefly that I think when you look at the date of the letter and the lack of much response that we have from S H A, it's been five months. If we were to go and tell people that we're going to start looking at all this, and they say, well, you know, okay, are we going to start scheduling meetings and have information? And we go, well, it may be five months, it may be 10 months, it may be a year before we get anything back from S H A. So stay tuned. We've alerted them for nothing. I think going out and getting and requesting the information is the proper thing to do. And I've already started some dialogue with some of the neighbors and some organizations about the fact that this needs to happen and that we've requested information. And I think we just need to move forward and continue to talk to folks, make sure that any lack of understanding about what's been done so far is explained, cleared up, and sure, start to begin feedback. But we've got the fire station process going forward. We have, after that, a possible need to do something with the city lot redevelopment efforts. I know that the Old Tacoma Business Association wants to put together a study group for that. There's a number of things that we'll need to focus and getting the information on all of those would be helpful.
Can I, it seems there's a consensus for staying with the letter. Can I ask that we formally move forward with the process of getting information on other options also? Because as far as I know, this is the only formal request we have to S H A.
It's the only regular request, but the other requests haven't been.
Can we formalize the other requests also? I just, I don't want there to be a record of only one option on the table.
Yeah, I believe those discussions have certainly taken place with the applicable staff among S H A. I can follow up with Ms. Blanchard and find out if that's been formalized by letter. You know, I would mention that part of the reason why the staff did send this letter and the council's prior discussions about traffic calming study... in the council's prior discussions about traffic calming studies, the junction was an area that came up specifically in that. I think as the staff indicated at that time, it was not our roadway, so we really didn't think it was appropriate to use city funds to evaluate the roundabout. And I believe there was some inclusion in the staff agenda items at that time indicating that we would be sending this letter. But certainly, we can, in response to Ms. Barron's concern, I believe the individual does know that, you know, it's a local historic district, and we can certainly make sure that that's the case and follow up with another letter, so that there's no confusion about that at all. And I will check per the mayor's request and make sure that we appropriately formalize the fact that we are interested in other options. I think the big question mark is a roundabout may not even be feasible at this location.
Right. I do remember that discussion, and I remember when that issue of the roundabout came out, the council's reaction was, you know, we need to do a great deal more study and public discussion before we go forward with it. Unfortunately, what I think has happened, and I agree with Terry on this, the question of getting people all concerned has already happened. I mean, we can't put the genie back in the bottle. The public now knows about this. Some of the residents around there know about it. And so, my suggestion would be, rather than sort of saying, well, we've chosen not to talk anymore about this, for us to have a meeting. And I don't care whether it's a big meeting with lots of people and lots of staff, or whether the council member for the area wants to just convene a meeting where it's discussed. But I do think that there needs to be some follow-up opportunity for people to get involved.
Sure, I agree.
Okay. If you can do that, and then, depending on the outcome of that meeting, which I would like to be at the meeting, just because I need to know these things.
SS Carroll is discussing this next week, Tuesday the 19th.
Okay, are the surrounding business owners a part of that discussion?
No, this was just the beginning of the discussion.
Okay. Then perhaps we'd also need something for the business owners, too.
Yep.
Okay. All right. So, that would be fine.
Given S.H.A.'s record on response, we could.
If I may, I just had one last item. Chief Rakucci had asked me to inform the council that the department will be pursuing funding under the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program. This is a grant program the city has participated in in the past. The funding that we would be eligible for if it's approved, which is, I think, a fairly automatic process, as I understand it, Chief. If you get the application in on time and follow all the applicable procedures, it would be just over $16,000. The project would entail the purchase of secondary or less-than-lethal weapons for the police department, I think specifically the purchase of approximately 20 tasers. Is that correct, Chief? And part of the grant process is that we do notify the council that we intend to apply, and I believe there's also a community notification that needs to take place, which obviously the chief would be handling. There are no matching fund requirements for this program, but I did want to share this with the council.
Could you tell me what a taser does? I'm sorry, I don't know.
There's a variety of less-than-lethal, obviously, there's all at the chief's, since he can explain it better than I can.
The department currently has several of them. They don't have enough for each officer. It's a less-than-lethal weapon. It incapacitates a person with electric shock. We go through very specific training on it, and we monitor it very closely. It's rarely used, but it's in lieu of, if you didn't have a taser, then the next thing in our continuum of force is the use of deadly force, which is our handgun. It's been proven in departments I've served in before and here, where it's not used very often, it's been used in the four months I've been here, but it is a weapon that will protect our officers and protect our citizens. And by purchasing, in the past, we've allowed officers to purchase them. I'd rather have our equipment used at all times and trained with people, and this would allow, so we'd shift when they go on the road. We just wouldn't have one or two officers. We're waiting for somebody to get there, maybe the difference between life and death. Yes, sir.
You mentioned that they haven't been used since you've been here for the last four months. We've only had tasers for a while, and I don't remember exactly now when we got the ones we do have. But have we, as an officer from Tacoma Park, used one in the line of duty since we've gotten them?
I believe they probably have, but I haven't read anything on them, because it hasn't been since I've been here. I could research it, if you'd like, and I'll see how many times they have used them.
I appreciate that, if you could, thank you.
Yep.
So, is it true that they shoot two probes into someone's body and put 50,000 volts of electricity through them?
I'm not sure if it's 50,000, so I don't have the paperwork in front of me. I've went through the training, and I've watched it used on officers in the training, which they do. In the departments I've been in, it's rarely used, but it has proven to be a deterrent more than anything. People see that, and they tend to say, well, I'm done. And it works well. There's only certain conditions you can use them. You don't use them on people under the influence of drugs and certain other things, because it doesn't work as effective, and it does sometimes have some medical complications. It's more of a weapon to be used when an officer's confronted with someone with a knife, a stick, or someone that begins to want to fight with officers, or someone that's mentally unbalanced. It proves to be a very good weapon. In Front Royal, where I introduced them and we used them, we used them four times in three years, and in all four cases, that would have resulted in most likely a fight and injury to both an officer and defendant. It reduces injuries to officers, but also reduces injuries in the use of force against potential defendants. I believe it's a good tool. We continue to research it, because there has been some negative feedback on it, and as police chief, we are continually getting information on it, continuing to research it. I feel it's a valuable tool for our officers and for our community to protect our officers and protect our citizens. And obviously, I'm trying to prevent the use of deadly force, and this has proven to be a good tool.
I certainly appreciate that you're looking for funding sources, and so, I would support this.
No match.
I would support something like this if the police chief's professional opinion is that it does prevent the use of deadly force. But I do think that, just as I'm sure there would be notification to the council if there were a shooting, that I would like to see that same extended to the use of this particular item.
That concludes my report, unless the council has any questions about any matter.
Are there any questions from the council? All right.
I'm sorry, I do have a question. It relates to the Safe Tacoma issue, and I know it's only been since Thursday, and that's not a whole lot of time, but I would love to see the city take definitive action on that initiative. I appreciated the meeting, but it was organized by all volunteers, and I think that people's patience is wearing thin with having that burden on the public. I'd certainly like to see the initiative take shape and move forward. Are we expecting a report from any one member, or from our contact person, or?
Commander Burton and myself met with Seth and two members of the executive board before that meeting. They know what they need to produce so that we can authorize the release of funds. That meeting went all the way towards producing what I think they needed in the final thing to submit. We're just waiting on submissions from them. They're talking about the possibility of a coordinator, they needed to submit a job description, and they also needed to submit the programs that they wanted to do, and that's what they're in the process of bringing in. As soon as they bring it towards us, we'll meet with them again, and I would say approval will be automatic if they follow through everything we discussed. So, we're waiting actually on them right now, ma'am.
Okay. Now, is there a way that we can oversee this coordinator? Because I'm concerned that given the city already having overhead and already having supervisory structure, that it really might facilitate what's going on here for that job description to be forthcoming from a position we already know, say, the CSafe coordinator. And then, the resources and the structure for that being something that we are at least familiar with and involved in, and I think then Commander Burton might have a good sense from our previous experience about how that would proceed.
I think, if I may, I mean, I think one of the things that when we had the work session, I believe it was back in May, is that we had committed, obviously, before any kind of funds could be released, that there would need to be an actual grant agreement, that this council would need to give me the authority to execute. So, I do envision that would be coming back to you. I think the meeting that Chief Rakucci and Commander Burton had with the members of the executive board was important, because I really wanted to make sure that Chief Rakucci and Commander Burton felt that whatever program was being developed would be complementary to their law enforcement efforts, so we're all kind of pulling in the same direction. As I indicated to Councilmember Austin Lane, I was out Friday, so obviously, I didn't have much time even from getting the update from the chief Friday morning. I was out of the office that day. I do plan to follow up with Gail Fisher Stewart, who has been designated as a point person to see if there's any assistance that we can certainly provide her, or any guidance in trying to make sure this moves forward as quickly as possible. We do understand that the council would like to see the program actually get off the ground. I think in terms of the actual oversight structure for the coordinator, I think that's something that the chief and I and Commander Burton can talk to the executive committee about. I think I had previously suggested to the council that the structure of that board, at least in my opinion, should probably be comparable or somewhat similar to what we have for the CSafe program, but certainly, I think there's some further discussion that needs to take place on that issue.
All right. Any other questions? I suggest we move to our one regular meeting item, and I think I'm going to suggest that we take a break at that point, because we've already gone a couple of hours at this point, and then have both the budget work session and the rent stabilization work session after that break. So, the item on our regular meeting agenda is the second reading of the ordinance which authorizes the Fourth Amendment to this current year, the FY07 budget.
Move the ordinance.
Yes.
On second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Is there any council discussion of that amendment? We have discussed this, I believe, when it came up for first reading. Are there any additional council comments or questions? Are there any public comments on this budget amendment? All right, seeing none, since this is second reading, will the clerk please call the roll?
Clerk.
Aye.
Councilmember Austin Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Barron.
Aye.
Councilmember DeSiver.
Aye.
Councilmember DeSiver.
Aye.
Councilmember Wigg.
Aye.
The ordinance passes its second reading. As I said, I'm going to suggest a short break at this point, and then for us to move to our budget work session discussion, and then to the rent stabilization.
Sorry, Chief.
I don't know, does the city manager want to introduce this issue?
Yeah, I'd certainly be happy to. At the, during the discussion of the various ordinances approving and adopting the budget for FY08, Councilmember Siemens had asked for the council's consideration of three issues, and I hope Councilmember Siemens, I accurately stated your request in the memo, but if I didn't, please feel free to correct me. One was to increase the hours worked by the coordinator of the senior recreation programs, which would also make this position eligible for fringe benefits, and the cost of this modification would be approximately $25,000. Councilmember Siemens had also proposed that we reduce the amount of money included in the public works department budget for contractual labor. The largest amounts of contractual labor are in the gardens division and the right-of-way division, and his proposal was to reduce the amount allocated for contractual labor and in lieu of those monies, basically add two full-time positions in the public works department. I would note that there would still be some use of contractual labor under this proposal in the public works department. The net effect of this change would be approximately $30,000. And then the last proposal made by Councilmember Siemens was to add funding, and this is part of Councilmember Siemens I was a little unclear on, but I believe the final figure was approximately $35,000 to fund an audit of the police evidence function. And I did include some information on each of these proposals in the agenda packet. I guess in brief, I think what staff would recommend would be that the council give consideration to Councilmember Siemens' proposal to increase the hours worked by the coordinator of senior recreation programs, as we had talked about last week. Since the time the budget was submitted, the individual in that position has announced her plan to retire, and certainly having a position that would receive fringe benefits would certainly make this position easier to recruit for. In regard to the proposal for the public works department budget, there is not any time-sensitive issue to that, and I would suggest that the council may want to have some more comprehensive discussions about staffing issues, the use of contractual labor, and not make that change at this time. The last proposal that Councilmember Siemens had made was to include funding for an audit of the police evidence function, as I had noted in the information included in the agenda packet. This is an area that Chief Rakucci has looked at since he joined us in February of this year, as part of his review of all departmental functions, and he has indicated to me that he does feel that there is a need for dedicated staffing in this area, and it's simply an area that does require further attention. The council had approved in this year's budget to hire a part-time property and evidence clerk, and I believe Chief Rakucci is very close to extending an offer to someone for that position. I also noted in my memo of June 8th to the council some other steps that Chief Rakucci plans to take in regard to the evidence handling by the police department. I think part of this process he has already started, which is conduct a comprehensive inventory of everything that is currently in the department's possession, dispose of old evidence that the city has no longer required to retain. The chief has indicated that there may be a need to purchase some different software. That'll be something that I think he'll make a recommendation to me after he finishes his assessment of this area, and that certainly there is a need to conduct periodic inspections of the evidence and property room. As I had also mentioned last week, in response to, I think, conversations that Councilmember Siemens has had with the city's auditors, Clifton Gunderson, they do plan to put an additional emphasis on the controls in this area during the FY07 audit, which will be conducted this summer and this fall by Clifton Gunderson. In talking to the director of finance about this issue, and I would note Ms. Brooks herself was a former auditor in both the governmental sectors as well as in the private sector, and she has also participated in the discussions that I've had with Chief Rakucci. Her feeling is that Chief Rakucci is proceeding in the right direction, that as a first step, perhaps that Chief Rakucci should be given the opportunity to complete his assessment, allow Clifton Gunderson also to complete the actions that they plan to take as part of the FY07 audit. In talking to Ms. Brooks about this issue, one of the things that she cited is that if you're going to have someone conduct any type of internal control or other type of audit, we would really need to refine the scope, and I think Ms. Brooks's thought was that after Chief Rakucci conducts his review and after Clifton Gunderson does their work, if the council still feels that there is a need for further examination of this area, we would be in a better position to define the actual scope of the work, and the council could certainly amend the budget at that time to include funding for that purpose. I think that's the staff comment. Obviously, Chief Rakucci is in the audience this evening. I think particularly if there's any questions about the property and evidence area, I would defer to Chief Rakucci.
Sure.
I would like to suggest that we talk about each of these items individually, beginning, and might as well just take them in the order that are on here. The first one being the senior recreation programs coordinator. This is a job that has been performed by a city employee on a part-time basis. I know that she has put in many hours on her, of her own time because the job entailed more than she felt could be handled in the, in the hours allotted and keeping it under nineteen and a half hours per week. Again, I feel that, that in those situations where employees, where we have positions, that we should not be limiting those positions to the arbitrary nineteen and a half hours to keep the employees from getting benefits. And so I would like this, this council to support making this a full-time position. And I certainly agree with city manager Matthews that the, the whole question of staffing and the use of part-time employees be reviewed and that we establish a policy. I think the council kind of unofficially made it clear last week that we don't want the use of part-time positions to be done exclusively for the avoidance of, of benefits. I, I think that the, from what we heard last week and what I've seen in the recreation department, we need to discuss this much more thoroughly in the coming year so that when we do next year's budget, we can see if there aren't other opportunities for employees to, to be full-time positions or at least be receiving benefits when appropriate. And there may be ways of, in that discussion, ways of minimizing the cost to the city and to the employee. So I would ask for my colleagues' support of making the senior programs coordinator a full-time position this year and then also putting it on the agenda to discuss the use of, or the review and discussion of the policy for the use of part-time and full-time staff.
Mayor, if I may, just to be clear, when I presented some information last week after talking to the various department heads who had some involvement in the issues Councilmember Siemens raised, Ms. Hayden had suggested that the coordinator for the senior programs be budgeted if the council is open to that at thirty hours per week. So I just wanted to be clear that the $25,000 figure that I cited was tied to thirty hours per week.
Yeah, I'm sorry, and I, I use the term full-time and applies forty hours a week, but my real goal is to not use the nineteen and a half hour limit strictly because of the, to exclude benefits. I know that's been used not just with the senior program coordinator in the past, but also with other recreation department employees, and I don't think that that's the intent of this council.
Well, let me, let me just say, I don't think that the, the point of this discussion is for the council to make a determination on the number of hours that individual employees should work. The council has made a statement many, many years ago, and I think it still continues to be the council's position, that we would rather have people who were full-time with benefits and adequate wages than people who were part-time or contract in order to save the cost of benefits. I think that's been a longstanding council opinion. I would suggest that rather than going through these positions one by one in the council, sort of deciding what the employees should do, I would recommend that we go with the city manager's recommendation and Councilmember Siemens' recommendation to change the, the scope of the, of the recreation department employee who does the, I can't remember exactly which one, senior recreation coordinator, the senior recreation coordinator. And I would also make two follow-up suggestions. The first one being that the council clarify a statement of, of policy, which we can do through resolution, I believe. And the other is that under the, under that statement of policy, which I'm assuming would be to have employees wherever possible be full-time with benefits, we could also include some of the living wage something, issues under that also, depending on how that discussion comes out. That I would recommend that we ask the city manager to come back in the following year's budget, the FY09 budget, with any changes that she believes would be advisable under the policy that the council had, has established at that point, rather than our trying to set sort of policies for individual positions at the eleventh and a half hour on the budget. And I appreciate your, your bringing this forward since it does appear that the senior recreation coordinator is a position that that would be appropriate for, but I, I really don't feel that this is the right way for the council to be making sort of requirements for individual positions and that we should establish the policy, which I would be very happy to go ahead and schedule that discussion, and that under that policy, the city manager come back to us and give us a, give us the information on how she thinks that would change and if it would change any other positions and, and what that would cost.
I appreciate that approach, Mayor, and I could fully support that. My concern is that if that has been a policy of the council in the past, that that policy is not being well adhered to and that we need to review whether or not the, and get an affirmation from the city manager that that is, policy is being followed. And then I think that we also need, because the part-time employees, I don't think realize the benefits of the union, I think that we need to provide each of our employees with information about what their process is for being able to address concerns that they might have.
When I said policy, I don't mean written policy. I mean, it was the council's sort of understanding. I don't think we ever said to the staff, we want you to go back and change things that are already in existence. So I don't think it was so much that the staff was not adhering to policy, it was more a question of there not having been a written policy. I understand that you would like the council's intentions, if I can put it that way, put into a written policy, and I think we can do that. And I think at that point, it would be appropriate to then say to the city manager, we would like to see this policy, you know, implemented, and then she can talk to us about whether it makes sense in a particular position to apply that policy to that position or not. And then if we do it in the context of next year's budget, it will give me more, it will give us more time to talk about it, as well as giving us an opportunity to make sure that money is upfront in the budget.
As I said, Mayor Porter, I do support that, and, and as part of that discussion, I will bring up the question of how employees should address any grievances if they are not part of the union and they feel like the policies are not being followed.
Okay. Is anybody else? Joy?
I just, I guess I need to check on where we are. Have we, on the first item with the senior rec coordinator, is that $25,000 something to, is there support for that on the council? I'm not sure if we're moving on to the next one or...
No. My, the, the proposal that I put on the table and that Councilmember Siemens has agreed to is that, that we go ahead and say yes to the suggestion made by the city manager that that $25,000 be put into the budget. Now, my understanding is from the city manager that she feels that that could come out of unappropriated funds. Am I, I don't want to speak for you.
I think there's probably different ways of asking the question. Obviously, we will be hiring a senior coordinator. The position will be vacant for some period of time. Certainly, I don't know that that will be $25,000 worth. One of the challenging things when we're providing the council with estimates for any position that involves benefits is we assume the, I don't know if you want to say the worst-case scenario, but we assume the most conservative route, which is that that individual would basically elect to take full family coverage, which is obviously the most expensive form of coverage. That's the assumption that we make. My suggestion would be if the council wishes to add this to the budget, that you probably just add the full amount. I think, Mayor, if your question is, is there a need to adjust anything else in the budget? If it stays at that dollar amount, I don't believe so. It is a relatively small amount in the grand scheme of the budget. I think if there are other more substantive changes that the council plans to make to the proposed budget that was read last week, then I think we need to talk about that. So I think it's a little bit hard for me to say how we should proceed until I get a sense of where the council's going on the other issues that have been proposed.
Okay. Well, what I'd like to...
set sort of policies for individual positions at the eleventh and a half hour on the budget. And I appreciate your bringing this forward since it does appear that the Senior Recreation Coordinator is a position that that would be appropriate for, but I really don't feel that this is the right way for the council to be making sort of requirements for individual positions and that we should establish the policy, which I would be very happy to go ahead and schedule that discussion, and that under that policy, the City Manager come back to us and give us a, give us the information on how she thinks that would change and if it would change, any other positions and what that would cost.
I appreciate that approach, Mayor, and I could fully support that. My concern is that if that has been a policy of the council in the past, that that policy is not being well adhered to and that we need to review whether or not the, and get an affirmation from the City Manager that that is, policy is being followed. And then I think that we also need, because the part-time employees, I don't think realize the benefits of the union, I think that we need to provide each of our employees with information about what their process is for being able to address concerns that they might have.
When I said "policy," I don't mean written policy. I mean, it was the council's sort of understanding. I don't think we ever said to the staff, "We want you to go back and change things that are already in existence." So I don't think it was so much that the staff was not adhering to policy, it was more a question of there not having been a written policy. I understand that you would like the council's intentions, if I can put it that way, put into a written policy, and I think we can do that. And I think at that point, it would be appropriate to then say to the City Manager, "We would like to see this policy, you know, implemented," and then she can talk to us about whether it makes sense in a particular position to apply that policy to that position or not. And then if we do it in the context of next year's budget, it will give me more, it will give us more time to talk about it, as well as giving us an opportunity to make sure that money is upfront in the budget.
As I said, Mayor Porter, I do support that, and as part of that discussion, I will bring up the question of how employees should address any grievances if they are not part of the union and they feel like the policies are not being followed.
Okay. Is anybody else? Joy.
I just, I guess I need to check on where we are. Have we, on the first item with the Senior Rec Coordinator, is that 25,000 something to, is there support for that on the council? I'm not sure if we're moving on to the next one, or?
No. My, the proposal that I put on the table and that Council Member Siemens has agreed to is that, that we go ahead and say yes to the suggestion made by the City Manager that that 25,000 be put into the budget. Now, my understanding is from the City Manager that she feels that that could come out of unappropriated funds. Am I, I don't want to speak for you.
I think there's probably different ways of asking the question. Obviously, we will be hiring a senior coordinator. The position will be vacant for some period of time. Certainly, I don't know that that will be $25,000 worth. One of the challenging things when we're providing the council with estimates for any position that involves benefits is we assume the, I don't know if you want to say the worst-case scenario, but we assume the most conservative route, which is that that individual would basically elect to take full family coverage, which is obviously the most expensive form of coverage. That's the assumption that we make. My suggestion would be if the council wishes to add this to the budget, that you probably just add the full amount. I think, Mayor, if your question is, is there a need to adjust anything else in the budget? If it stays at that dollar amount, I don't believe so. It is a relatively small amount in the grand scheme of the budget. I think if there are other more substantive changes that the council plans to make to the proposed budget that was read last week, then I think we need to talk about that. So I think it's a little bit hard for me to say how we should proceed until I get a sense of where the council's going on the other issues that have been proposed.
Okay. Well, what I'd like to say is, on the 25,000, that does seem to be the right direction to go in on the 35,000 for the police evidence audit. I think that we should wait for Chief Rakucci's, give him a chance to do a more thorough assessment and report back to us. And then on the Public Works positions, I actually had a question about that. So Darrell, I'm glad you're here, and this may have come up four years ago under that budget discussion, and Al Lot was the director, but it was pertaining to part-time garden staff and possibly right-of-way staff. And I don't know if it was the same issue and now we're just hammering out a solution or maybe it's totally unrelated to that, and we solved that problem previously.
I'm afraid I don't have an exact recollection of what the discussion might have been there, so I can't really give a definitive answer. I know that we have used temporary labor in both those divisions, you know, on a seasonal basis at very similar rates as we are proposing for next year's budget. So we haven't done a great increase or decrease in the amount of temporary labor hours since that time. We basically split it out into seasonal work and particular projects and areas where the divisions feel like they need assistance. So those numbers have stayed fairly consistent in the budget for quite a while.
They have. The issue I was raising, and I was raising it a little late four years ago because of graduation and trips and different things, but the issue was that we had employed one or two people pretty much full-time for several years, but they were in this category of no benefits.
Yeah, one of the, but we're no longer doing that. One of the things that I did when upon becoming Director was to establish a temporary labor policy. Now, we don't extend a temporary labor's stretch of work for more than three months without my specific approval. We do it on a project-by-project basis, because in the past, it had sort of lapsed into kind of a surrogate employee, if you will, people from a temporary agency being around to do various jobs in various divisions on an almost continuous basis. That's no longer, we're no longer handling our temporary labors that way.
Okay. Well, I did find the numbers in, let's see here, in, Barb, in your memo to us, I found the Public Works Department numbers quite compelling, that the contractual labor budget would be reduced to very little if those two positions were augmented, given benefits. So the reduction of 34,000 and the reduction of 33,000.
She realizes the net cost, right?
Right. And that the cost of doing the full-time employees would be far more than that. So you have the reduction of, what is that, almost $70,000?
That's, that's correct.
And then the addition of 30,000.
Well, if the 30,000 is a net increase after those reductions would be made.
Right.
Right.
Well, I'm content if that's where the council is going to see this explored further in the next year, but I do approve of this policy. I think that the council has stated it on numerous occasions, and if we need to codify it through a resolution, then we should do so. Any, yes, Colleen?
Okay. So as I understand the memo, the things on the first page are things that are already part of the budget, right? That's the combining the custodial in Public Works, the reception desk at the community center, and the after-school support care program. That's already part of the current budget.
That's correct.
Okay. The library computer learning center isn't feasible. For Public Works and the Recreation Department, you know, I support the idea of going to a full-time, 30-hour-a-week position or just sort of a more full-time position for the senior coordinator, but I think that we should wait to add that as a permanent position until we finish the discussion about the Recreation Department. You know, one of the things that I think about is the, the number of permanent full-time staff we have now and the sort of level of administrative coverage that we have now, which includes a director, two assistant directors, a program director, a teen center director, I think a sports coordinator, and I think maybe there's one more. And I would just, I support it in theory, but I guess I would like to see us wait until we have that discussion. I don't think it's going to hurt us any. They're not going to go out and hire somebody right now, probably maybe some part-time, some part-time temporary person to do it over the summer. Regarding the Public Works and Recreation Department, even at the additional cost of $30,000, I would likely support a, having full-time folks instead of contract labor, if that's the direction that the Public Works Director wants to go in, and if she does, I would support that. But regards to both Public Works and the Recreation Department, you know, I really see this as an opportunity to hire young people and, you know, first-time job folks in our own community, maybe prioritizing Tacoma Park hires into jobs that have, you know, sort of limited barriers to entry essentially, and to do some job training and job development and letting people get experience in their, in their, in their jobs. And I guess that's more the policy direction I would like to see us go in than necessarily making certain that every position that we have, that we could possibly have, be a full-time benefited position. I think there's a lot of value to that, but I also think that there's a lot of value to providing flexibility, some entry-level jobs, and giving our young people in this community access to jobs that are right here in their neighborhood, in areas that they're, that they're familiar with. And so I would like to talk about that more instead of making a decision tonight to make this a full-time position, even in, even in Public Works.
Let me just remind, let me just remind the council that the decision that we're making this evening is whether to put the money into the budget, because we have to pass the budget. If we don't put the money in the budget, then obviously we can't do anything this year. If we do put the money in the budget, then that would give the council the opportunity to then discuss how we're going to spend the money. So if we put the money in the budget for the Senior Recreation Director, that would still give the council the opportunity to either authorize the City Manager to go ahead and hire or to do something else. But we're talking about putting the money in the budget, not establishing the policy this evening.
Mayor Porter, as the individual who brought this to the council, I would just like to, again, reiterate that I fully support your recommendation that we not put the money in the budget this year, because I think the policy discussion that you have offered...
But I was saying okay to the Senior Recreation Coordinator.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, sorry. I just...
We've combined things, and I'm getting confused here anyways.
Public Works one is the one that we...
Right.
But I'm willing to withdraw that request because of the discussion we've had and your commitment to have the policy discussion during the coming years so that we can, in fact, make these decisions in the appropriate time during the FY '09 budget. If, if we want, we could move on to the question of the evidence management?
If I can just clarify, I'm, if I'm understanding correctly, the council wants to put in the 25,000, is that correct, Barb?
Yes.
For the, okay. And the one council member has raised the issue of whether this should authorize the City Manager to hire, whether there should be further discussion of that, hiring on that position. That's a, that's an issue that I hadn't sort of included in my, on the table, and I, I guess the first question would be to ask the City Manager whether this is timeliness issue here.
Yeah, I think certainly there is. The department is about to enter probably one of its busiest times per year. Obviously, Ms. Anck is still on staff, but she will be leaving and actually hitting the roads in her RV and enjoying her retirement as of July 1st. And I would hate to see our ability to basically move forward with hiring her replacement impacted in any way. I think if this is something the council feels that it's going to want to talk about, then I would basically probably instruct Ms. Hayden to go ahead and advertise the position as it is currently budgeted, letting the individuals know who apply that there's an opportunity, the hours could be increased, but I honestly can't envision not having some dedicated attention to our senior programming for any significant period of time. I think that would be unfair to our seniors and, quite frankly, detrimental to the Recreation Department's ability to serve them.
I would be willing to give the City Manager that authority and with the understanding that we are going to talk about goals in the Recreation Department, and at that point, we could adjust such things as could be adjusted at the point at which there was some normal turnover.
Eric?
Yes.
I think you've got, I see three head nods and...
We have one maybe down there. Let's see where that goes.
We have a maybe, because I really feel very uncomfortable about going ahead with this, because once the position, once the person is hired, it's quite difficult. I mean, we have many employees who last a long time on our payrolls. Very hard if we then decide to urge some kind of reorganization in the Rec Department. We're locked in with a set of employees, so I am on that, pretty reluctant to go forward with it. On the other hand, this is, this discussion about the Rec Department should have occurred much earlier, so it's, you know, it's, it's very difficult, this kind of last minute, to have the kind of discussion we need. Colleen has laid out some serious issues in the Rec Department, and I feel very conflicted about adding another coordinator to the, to the staff there already. So I'm, that's, that's why I'm kind of sitting on the fence here.
I...
Yeah, Terry?
I certainly understand what Council Member Snipper is, is saying and what Council Member Clay has said. I wonder, though, as I think about some of the discussions that I think we need to have about the Recreation Department, and one of the scenarios that I can see is that we may want, as Council Member Snipper said, some reorganization of the, of the department, but I'm not sure that that would really be a policy decision this council would be making. And it would be something that I'm sure if the City Manager wanted to do that, that she would be able to find positions for all of the people in the department. I think the policy decision that this council might look at, though, is whether or not we want to be in this business, Recreation, in which case I would think that we would be looking for alternative organization to provide the service in the city, in which case I would expect that they would be able to absorb any staff members that we have. So if you see, I'm not sure you understood what I'm saying, Scow, then...
No, no.
I'll tell you, if, you know, if we invited, for example, and only as one example, if we invited the county to run our recreation program here at the community center, and I'm not saying that's what you were proposing, I'm just saying that's one scenario that I think I could envision, that we would want to ask them to, to include our current staff members, to take them on as employees, much as the county did when we had the, had them take over our code enforcement for housing.
But we might, as a policy decision, decide we want to redirect our resources to a different constituent group, for example, rather than just have it taken over by a different organization. There's a lot of policy decisions that we might make that might affect overall organization, although I will say that of all of the component parts of that, the senior coordinator is one job that is going to be unique and maybe attract a different set of people than your, the regular recreation. If there was probably one job you could pull out from the mix in all of the recreation jobs, that that would be it.
That would remain.
My, my assumption would be that we're going to continue to have programs for seniors, though. And that that's, you know, however we do the Recreation Department, we probably will do that. So I guess I would reiterate that I think that this one might be, and I, and I think it's important that we have programs for seniors, since we have a lot of seniors in the community, including some who are fairly low-income and who don't have a lot of options for, you know, expensive forms of recreation.
Yeah, and as I more increasingly resemble that audience, I'm more sympathetic. That's, that's a really excellent point, because it is true that it's hard to imagine the city adopting a policy that didn't include programs for seniors.
So maybe we can say yes to letting the City Manager go ahead and direct the Recreation Department to go ahead and hire on that on a 30-hour-a-week basis. Colleen?
I would be okay with that. Are we going to get any rebate money?
Um...
We don't know. But that's possible.
That's, that's one of the options that is going to be discussed with the county. And I think we should know that at the end of the year.
Yeah, the goal is for the Joint County Municipal Task Force to wrap up its work by this calendar year and to make recommendations to the county executive.
Okay. I think we're, we're very rapidly approaching, at least on this one issue, approaching a consensus. Can we sort of leave, can we take yes for an answer? Bruce, let me put the spotlight on you. You're just the next person who raised your hand.
Yeah. I'm a yes. I just wanted to point out that we've, we've already kind of progressed on this position in that when it started out, it was two people job-sharing a part-time position. It became one person in a part-time position, and I think it's now moving toward one person in a more full-time than part-time position, and it reflects the increasing importance of having programs available for seniors and the recognition that it's important.
Okay. So we are, we are okay on putting the money in the budget and having the City Manager go ahead and direct the Rec Department to hire that person, with the understanding that the council will have a discussion of a formal policy on part-time versus full-time and benefits, and that policy will then be one of the goals that the City Manager will take a look at and make the staffing decisions and recommendations to the council in the FY '09 budget. Okay. Now, the second issue is the, is the...
Second or third, depending on how you call it.
Okay.
The, the evidence management. And I wondered if Chief Rakucci could come up to the table and we could talk for a minute. You know, first, I'd like to just make it clear that my questions regarding property management are not about our City Manager or the Police Chief or any of the members of the Police Department. Really, I've raised these questions, asked for this discussion, because I think it's all about the City Council doing our job. And if we only had to approve speed bumps and hire a good quality City Manager, you know, our, our job would be over, we wouldn't have to discuss this. But at the end of the night, I need to be able to assure the city residents that our city business is in good order, and to do that, I need to be completely confident myself. And that's why I'm interested to hear what you found now that you have looked at this. But I would just ask my colleagues on the council to think back about how many times this issue has been raised and how many times we've talked about it, and what we have heard from the city management, the Police Department in the past on this issue, and then where we stand tonight and what we know tonight.
Well, I made a review of the evidence and supply property, the whole issue, which uncovers seize cars, seize evidence, seize money. I've identified the issues that need to be fixed. Part of the thing would be getting a person down there, because we haven't had a person down there, and it has required a person to be there. We're starting at probably 20 hours a week. It may be increased because we need that position. Part of the problem is that they have not kept up in the past, and we're going to get brought up to date where it should be, get the room up to date for accreditation. I realize that you have been... I realize that you have received reports in the past that were problems. They were corrected for accreditation. Unfortunately, they've lapsed back to where they were previously. I think I have a good handle on it in the fact that I have dealt with these issues obviously before. They're all fixable. I'm looking at everything to make sure it's been done properly, legally, and we're moving forward. The hiring, I hope to make an offer in two weeks, but I'm doing extensive background because of the seriousness of the position. I'm consolidating duties which will go in there. Part of the problem is several people have had the responsibility and it's been too much on their plate, and as a result, some things have been neglected there. So we're in the process of going through it. From the standpoint of an audit, we've already conducted an audit on several things down there that with auditors would do. Based on my experience in investigating white collar and government crime in the past, we applied the same principles. I'm getting some assistance to look at a few other issues further as you're aware of, and I will be reporting back on that. I believe we're headed in the right path. I will continue to report to you periodically as we improve it. I think bringing the person on hiring, the fact that I've now identified what I need to do, I have a work plan to solve those problems. Some of the things that were backlogged, we've already taken care of. We obviously have some more things to deal with, but I think we're on the right path and based on the fact that, you know, we've only been here several months, I think we have corrected some things already. We know what the problem is, we know what the solution is, now we need to make it happen. And I will report to the council on a periodic basis, as I've done on every issue since I've been here, and I've told the manager, we will fix this problem and it will stay fixed. And we'll put things in place so this will not occur in the future, and that can be done. This is not something that can't be fixed and shouldn't stay fixed, and as a manager, it's my responsibility to you and to the citizens to come apart. I would think right now the audit would be premature. Let me complete everything I'm doing and continue to report back to you periodically or the city manager, as I, in a constant discussion with her, and she will report to you and keep you informed. But I think right now it would be premature to spend the money on an audit in that most of what I've done and what I know that the auditors will do when they come in, will identify any other issues, but I think we've really almost already conducted a complete audit and one part of the evidence from, and the rest of it's in the process of being completed now.
Okay, I had a whole list of questions and I suspect from your, what you've said, I don't need to answer them. I was basically looking for assurance from you that if we had come in possession of a gun that had been properly logged in, that all of the, that you were confident that that gun has worked its way through the process correctly and has been disposed of correctly.
Property being logged in's never been a problem. The problem's been that the property, getting dispositions and disposing of the property in a timely manner. That's the biggest concern when it comes to property. The property's been properly logged in, that's not going to be a problem. You can find the property, the officer got, match up. With an auditor, he'll give me a case number and say produce this evidence, and then we produce the evidence. That's not the problem. Our problem is we haven't disposed of evidence in a timely manner, which I am going to correct, but that will be taken care of. It's a standard process, it works in every police department in the United States. The four departments that I've been experienced, three that I ran and the one that I was an assistant chief, operate. This is not something hard to fix, it's just something because of lack of labor and a lack of, you know, attention in certain areas, it just has gotten to the point it is. We are going to fix it.
Okay, but your phone call this week indicated that maybe not everything was, you were not able to account for everything.
That's correct, and that's being investigated further, which we'll report back on.
Okay. So if my wife, if our house had been robbed and my wife's diamond bracelet was stolen and you later recovered that and I were to come down there, you're confident that you would be able to find that diamond bracelet?
It may take a while, but we'll find it.
Okay.
That's not where my problem is. The problem with the property is that it has not been disposed of and kept up with dispositions. Other words, things should be going out to the officers on it every ninety days, have we got a disposition. There is evidence in the room that goes back to officers that have long left the department, and it's sat there as opposed to being disposed of. We have, we know what's in there, it's just we haven't gotten rid of it.
Well, I've had someone complain to me that they've come down to pick up their recovered property and that the police department was unable to find the property. I've also had concern expressed to me that property was seized during an investigation and that no court case came forward, and yet the property was not returned to them. And so this is, this is part of a long series of incidents that led me to start asking the questions.
If you've got a specific case, Councilmember, I mean, I will look at it. I mean, I've had no complaints on property since I've been here. There was one complaint where property had been seized and hadn't been winning the evidence from, and the people came in before we had a chance to log it in and we returned it to them, but other than that, I've had no specific complaints on people that we had property in our possession and couldn't return it. That hasn't been an issue. Now, maybe it was before I got here. I can't deal with things that...
It was before you got here.
Okay, I can't deal with things I don't know about. Anything you have specifically, please give it to me and I will follow it up, as you know I do on all issues. There is problems in the property room, and I'm going to fix them, and there's some big ones, but, you know, the main thing with property and evidence is it's there, it hasn't been disposed of. When I say disposed of, a lot of this stuff can have been destroyed, could have been auctioned, or some of it's, you know, should have, it's just evidence. There's a lot of evidence sitting there that we no longer need, it should be destroyed. And from murder cases, from raid cases, from robbery cases, that's because there wasn't a timely follow-up. We're going to put things into place with someone in there full-time so this won't occur in the future. We've got to get caught up, which we're going to do, and then our procedures for bringing evidence in are very timely and work, they're part of accreditation.
Let's follow this bracelet through a little further. If you had a diamond bracelet, I came down and you showed me that diamond bracelet and I said, hey, that's my wife's bracelet, we were robbed last year and that's it, I can, I see it and I recognize it, would that be enough for you to just give it to me?
No. You'd have, we'd have to file a police report, there most likely would be an insurance report. We'd have, they'd have to provide adequate identification before we release something, and that's a standard process anyway.
Okay, that makes sense to me. I'd just like you to understand a little history since you haven't been here, of how this came about and why it became such an issue to me. In the fall of 2005, okay, that's been a while ago now, a city resident filed a Public Information Act request to the city government, to the city manager requesting information about our property management and asking for copies of the required reports that the general orders require. And at that time, the city manager advised the resident that it was going to cost over $600 for copies of the reports. There was, the city resident asked that we waive that fee, asked the council to waive that fee, and the council decided not to. Now, I have no idea what that, what that resident was looking for, but that was when I started to think about property management, okay? There were a couple of times, as I mentioned, that I received questions from city residents regarding property, and I think I just, I just itemized those without the specifics. But I started looking a little closer and I noticed that in past, we would see in the city newsletter that there were announcements that you could come down and look at things, property the police department had recovered, and see if it was yours, that if they had recovered something from a burglary that had happened at your house, or if it was lost property that they had found. I no longer see those notices. I also saw that there used to be auctions of property, both jewelry, other personal possessions, and automobiles, and we no longer have those auctions of property or vehicles announced in the city newsletter. As I notice these things, I've raised a question about it. And again, I've suggested in the past that we have an audit to see what's going on because I'm very concerned about what was going on in our, in our property management, I became increasingly concerned about it. Each time that I suggested that we do an audit, I've been told how, you know, not really When the city auditor came in here last fall, I asked if he had looked at the property management, since that is a revenue source of the city, and he didn't know anything about it, he said he would get back to me, and that's another story we don't need to talk about. But each of these times that I've raised this, it seems like there should have been someone at the city manager or the police chief level who is, at least wants to look into it and see if there is a problem. I think this council should have wanted to look into it and have an independent assessment of whether there is a problem.
Well, I think I've told you there is a problem and we're going to fix it.
Yeah, now.
Okay.
Well, the fall of 2005.
I can't speak for the past, okay? I come in, I've looked at property, I've looked at money, I've looked at cars. We're moving forward on all three fronts to eliminate a backlog of issues. We have had been accredited where we met to certain standards which conform with the general orders, so at least two years ago. At that point, we were in compliance. We are not in compliance now. We've had problems in the past. I went back five years and looked at the records, I've looked at our general orders, and I've looked at what's required, and I know what we have done in the past and what we need to be doing in the future. I'm putting things into place so that we follow the directives, that staff members have certain responsibilities, and that we have a full-time person. We've had five to six people in charge of certain areas, which means each person came in and did it a little bit different way. And we've gone back now, we're going to have one person in charge answering to one person in the command structure, and I hold those people responsible. To get accredited again, we have to meet all the standards. Right now, we don't, and I know that we have to fix that. We are hiring somebody for the Kalia standards, which will help us in revising. I am revising several of the directives so that we can deal with this problem. There's certain things in the directives, by doing it the way that I proposed to the manager and to Ms. Brooks, we will solve some of the problems we have right now. All I can tell you is where I'm at now and what I've done in almost four months, we're going to fix it. It's not an overnight fix. I will continue to update the city manager, who I know has a responsibility to report to you, but I think I have a responsibility to try and save the council some money, and I hope in fact that you brought me in here as a new chief and from the outside, I am taking a look at it. I'm not protecting anybody. If there's criminal, you know, if there's something criminal, I'm going to make sure it's taken care of, and that's why we've done the different things we're doing and some of the briefings that you've had already.
If I'm understanding what you're saying, Chief, you're saying that you don't believe that property or cash or cars have been mishandled, you believe that the record-keeping hasn't been kept up the way it should be?
I think we have certain procedures in place, Mayor, we have not followed them and kept up to date with them. Keeping up to date with them and following the procedures, there wouldn't be a backlog. There's a backlog and we're clearing it out now. I basically almost cleaned up, most of the vehicles that were public works has now been taken care of. I'm working on the storage lot, I'm looking at the property, I know what we have to do there, and I'm looking at money, and we know what we have to do there.
So we haven't been properly discharging things that we have?
And it's a management issue, you know, and I'm not going to get into specifics because I don't think we want to do that in this form, but basically, we have rules, if they're followed, there's not a problem. Some of the procedures haven't been followed, as I've reported to the city manager. I know what the problems are and I know how to correct them, and that's what I'm going to do.
Okay.
I, you know, I like you. I think, I think I've told you that.
A few times.
Yeah, and, okay? And I think you probably like me, I'd like to think that, I don't know if it's true or not, but the issue is, if I walk in and ask for that bracelet that I said that was stolen from my wife, you wouldn't just give it to me because you like me, you would ask me to, right? You would want to check and make sure that I really had been robbed and that it really was a bracelet that was stolen and kind of met that identification.
Correct.
I'm the same way. I trust you, I think it's great that you're looking at that, I'm disappointed...
I'm just looking at them, I know where it is and we'll fix it.
Right, and I'm disappointed that it's been a year and a half that we have not, that the problem has been ignored in that department, but the bottom line is, I have to go home and be able to tell my neighbors and my constituents that I am confident that everything is okay. And to do that, I think this council needs to be confident by having someone look at it independently. I mean, what's the difference between saying everything's okay now and saying everything was okay six months ago before you got here? I don't see any, you know, I'm looking through a keyhole and my keyhole, you know, doesn't show me anything different other than I like you, you know, I think you're a good manager.
Well, I didn't say everything was okay, Councilman, there's a problem and I'm going to fix it. I mean, I've identified the problems to the city manager, I think her memo tonight outlines, we're not going into many specifics, but there are problems in there and we're addressing them. The auditor would come in and would give you the same exact report because I've basically done what an auditor would do. I've been audited many times over the years for property, money, and in Montgomery County for thirteen years, I was in charge of all the major money accounts, and I've been audited on numerous occasions. Nobody knows better what the auditor's going to ask than me. When we complete it, if you're not satisfied, then I would think at that time, but you have to give a new chief and new employees that we're bringing on board the opportunity to correct the mistakes that have been made and making sure that there are things in place to make it work now. It has worked off and on.
If this council had done its job six months ago, we would have known this problem and able to correct it six months ago rather than sitting here tonight talking to you and being told for the first time that we have serious problems in that area.
No, we couldn't have corrected it six months ago because we didn't have a police chief.
We could have had an audit that we would know.
Let me just suggest, I think the chief is giving us, you know, good information. I believe he's after the issues that he has identified. I have been impressed with his willingness to, you know, go all out in terms of addressing the concerns that he has uncovered. I think that the kinds of things that he is bringing to us are, I'm certainly not minimizing them, but I do feel that he is moving toward correcting them. I would agree with the city manager, I think we should let the chief follow through with his review, we should ask our auditors to take a look at this. On the basis of those two reports, and I think that both of those entities should report to the council, specifically on this issue, the chief should report to us and the auditor should report to us. On the basis of those two reports, if we feel that there's additional information we would like to get, then I think we should talk about a specific audit. At this point, I don't know what we would tell somebody to look at, and I, and I don't think it's a good use of the taxpayers' money to say, here's $50,000, just go root around there for a while and tell us if they find anything interesting. And so I think doing this in a logical way, asking the chief for his report, asking our auditors for their report, on the basis of that information, just saying, okay, and I think, you know, Councilmember Siemens, I think you should have every opportunity to talk to the chief about whatever he gives us, talk to the auditors about whatever they give us. If you still have concerns, I would be happy to entertain that discussion about putting more money into looking into it in addition, but we've already got somebody looking into it, you know, in a very aggressive way that we didn't have before, and I, and I think that's a good, that's a good move forward.
I just want to say I don't support funding for an audit at this time, and I would like to let the police chief have a crack at solving the issue in his own department.
Thank you.
I guess.
I think that, for me, the fundamental issue is that there be good procedures and records in place, and that there be good management to ensure that those good procedures and records are, that the procedures are followed and the records are maintained, and I think that that's the direction the council should give to, well, all the departments. And so I feel fully confident that you will go ahead and follow those principles, come back with a report. I agree with Colleen that after, and others, that after the reports are in, that's the time to decide what to do next. I do think however, on a more general level, not specific to the police department or this issue, that the council needs to come up with a policy for, I don't like to use the word audits, but a policy for oversight or looking into or investigating issues that come up around the city, because we hear from the public and we need to be able to answer to the, to the public. It is clearly that we go through the city manager on the one hand, but as a general policy, we also need to feel confident that we could, in principle, and I'll use the police department in this case, that we could in principle ask you to show us the records, show us the evidence, show us the procedures, discuss the management, and that we would feel satisfied with it within the limits of privacy and a number of other similar sorts of things. In other words, that there is transparency to the operations. And I feel that's what, that's what, that's the council's job to develop those... And I feel that's what, that's the council's job, to develop those, that management, that those policies and procedures to do that kind of oversight. I don't like the word "audit," because that has, to me, a financial kind of thing. You just happen to be sitting there, Chief, so I'm directing to you, but I actually think it's a more general function that the council needs to work on.
Well, yeah, I think you stated, we have procedures in place, there are certain things that are done through a Kalia accreditation, that makes sure that we keep them in order, there are certain reports that are supposed to be submitted on a basis. It comes down to management accountability, which stops with me, okay? That hasn't been followed, I have reported that to the city manager. I know what needs to be done to fix it, and if obviously the problem still exists in a year, then you all be looking at me, because I didn't do my job in making people accountable. And that's what this boils down to, accountability. Accountability stops with me and the city manager who I report to, and I'm gonna come back to you in a couple of months and tell you we've got it fixed, or what I need to do to fix it, or what the problems are that I can't fix it. And I never say I can't do anything. I always try to come through, and that's what I'm here for, and I'm gonna fix it.
Yeah, and I'd just like to address for a second, in a general way, the way that the council can, I think, operate to make sure that there isn't the frustration expressed by my colleague about bringing an issue continually and not feeling a sense that we have an avenue to pursue to get at a particular issue. And I'd just like to say that, in general, I think, as an issue or concern is brought forward, I think, I'll speak for myself, that I've had a sense in the past that I didn't want to go on any fishing expedition, and that maybe there needed to be some sense of a particular issue that might need to be addressed and have best to approach it. And I kind of have the image of running at a problem and hitting a brick wall, and then backing up and running and hitting the brick wall again, and what we need to do is find a way to kind of step around the wall and get at the problem rather than running at it again. So, anything that we could do among ourselves to try and work around that issue would be helpful, so as not to try and, so that it doesn't end up being, bringing up an issue again and again, and it kind of gets deflected and seems to be calling into question some other things that may not be going on at all, but a good way for us to address that.
Thank you. Five months ago, before you got here, when my concerns were addressed by me getting questioned about how I was making the officers in your department feel, or the employees in your department feel, seems inappropriate, and at the end of the day, when you come back and say, "Okay, you're confident everything is okay," I have nothing to rely on besides your word.
Now, if there's reports that are in place that would answer your questions.
Reports that we don't see here at this council.
They're Kalia reports or public reports.
The bottom line is, and I think it gets back to what Councilmember Snipper was saying, I think that the council needs to think about how we do our oversight job in a better way. I think it is, you know, your testimony tonight has told me that it hasn't worked the way we've done it in the past, and I'm part of that. It's not, I'm not blaming, you know, everybody else and pointing, you know, I haven't done a good job of addressing this situation, I haven't done a good job of finding out what is really going on in the property management in a way that would protect the interests of the residents of the city. And I think, again, this, and I point to you, but I mean to all of us here on the dais, I think we need to think about how we can perform our oversight function in a better way so that we're not surprised a year and a half after someone raises a question that a year and a half later, we're finding that there's a real problem there. I think we need to do, talk about management reviews, or audits, or whatever you want to call them.
I think that's a topic for another time. If I'm interpreting the comments that Councilmembers have made, there seems to be a council consensus to get a report from the chief when he completes his review, which should be before too long, that we ask the auditor to put special emphasis on this, and that we get a report from the auditor on this, and then the council at that point will take up the question of whether we need to pursue this further. I'm not quite sure how to address the issue raised by Councilmember Snipper in terms of how the council approaches these kinds of things, but I suspect it will become a part of a number of other discussions that we have, and certainly we can keep that on the table. And so, I think this, at this point, we have sort of concluded these items, and it gives us, it gives the council, it gives the city manager direction as to how to present the second reading of the budget to us next week. Now, we are running substantially behind schedule at this point. What I would like to do, I don't think we're gonna be able to make a final decision on rent stabilization, but what I would like to do is I would like to go quickly through the items, just so that there's an understanding on the council's part of what we will be taking up as we take it up, and I think I've got it up for next week, although if I'm gone for a week, my memory just completely goes, so yes, we do have it up for next week. Is this a comment on what we're, I mean, I haven't, since we haven't put anything on the table yet, go ahead.
It's a comment on the process. I won't be here next week, and I feel like we've all said everything we have to say about rent stabilization, and I wonder if we can't just blow through it, everybody say they're, you know, like 65%, 100% and just do it.
Well, we can certainly try that. I'm not sure that's gonna work, but we can certainly try it. The issues that I see as being still open are the allowance itself, whether it's 100% or something less than that, the number of rental units in the building, which makes rent stabilization not apply, and then I thought that the other issue that was still open was the issue of the fee on units that were outside of rent stabilization. I thought that that was still an open issue.
I have some further information on that. I would suggest we just limit our comments to one minute and just do it.
Well, I don't think that's gonna happen, but go ahead. I'm gonna see if, Sarah, do you have something?
Basically, you're correct. There are two outstanding issues that the council has not reached consensus on, again, the percentage of the annual rent increase allowance and the application of rent stabilization by property. I would encourage you to defer any discussion regarding the fee that was proposed by Councilmember Clay until we present, or we meet with the council to do an updated, affordable housing plan. It would be more appropriate from a variety of perspectives, and it would also give the council an opportunity to look at alternative means of financing any future affordable housing initiatives that you'd like to undertake.
Okay, but as long as we don't think it's a decision that's been made?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
So, the two things are the increase and the application.
Okay.
The increase, what was the second one?
The percentage increase, and then the number of units that exempts a property from rent stabilization. Councilmember Snipper made a comment at council comment period last week, I believe, or the week before, I can't remember. Did you wanna, did you wanna put something on the table?
May I interrupt for a minute, because, you know, one of those two items I have to recuse myself from, and I wonder if we could handle those two items separately and just let me know which one we're doing so I can get out of them.
Okay. Why don't we, why don't we do the one that you would be here for?
Okay.
Rather than having you wait in the hall for us to get the-
Sorry, listen, Snipper's fine.
And can we, and I do apologize, because it's the annual increase. I believe that the, several members of the council had supported an increase to 100%. Councilmember Siemens had suggested, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but if I recollect, you were talking about leaving it at 70%.
That's correct.
Did you want to speak to that?
Again, I feel that we have been addressing some of the concerns with the rent stabilization law, including providing some mechanism for utility increases and things such as that, but then the increase, allowing the increase in the annual rent based on the consumer price index, which is also affected by utility prices, would be kind of a duplicate allowance. And so, I felt that since we had already addressed many of the other issues, that leaving it at 70% seemed appropriate.
If I might clarify something. The council has not made a decision as yet regarding the utility surcharge. What you have done, however, is concur with the need to go through and do a survey to see what impact the utility costs have on the operating expenditures of a property. So, at this point in time, you would not be asked to make, take any action on an actual additional surcharge for utility costs, and we would not undertake an analysis of utility costs and charges until after the first of the fiscal year. We have money included in the budget at that point to go through and do a thorough analysis, and then we'd come back to the council with any information that we gather at that point in time, and it would give you an opportunity to establish whether or not a surcharge would be appropriate. A portion of that analysis would be to see how it works with the, whatever rent increase allowance is approved by the council.
Then I would just move that we table this particular item until the utility surcharge analysis has been completed.
Let me just talk about this in a different way.
Yeah, was there a second for the motion?
Well, this is not a formal legislative question. The issue is, we have tried to do several things to simplify the rent stabilization law. One of those things is to incorporate the capital improvement petition into the net returns petition, but also to try and incorporate it into the overall increases. In essence, what we have tried to do is we've tried to say the annual increases would be a little bit larger than they would otherwise be under the current law, but that these big increases, which haven't been taken advantage of by all property owners, but basically by some of the bigger property owners, the capital improvement petitions, would be no longer an option, and people would have to cover capital improvement costs in the regular annual updates. I think that's a simplification. It's also fair and easier for the tenants to deal with as a regular update rather than coming all at once. And it's also true that the capital improvement petitions have basically only been used by the larger property owners, not by the smaller property owners, so I think that their use as an incentive hasn't really been very uniform. And so, my understanding and my agreement to go to 100% has also been based on the fact that this includes capital improvements, and, except for those capital improvements which are over, you know, which would be incorporated into the net rate of returns. I'm sorry, I'm not getting the, it's late, and I'm sorry, I'm not getting the right terms, but the, if it caused the property owner to stop making money on the property, then it would get folded into the other petition process. If it could be covered by the normal process of raising rents, then it would get incorporated to the 100%. So, I think that makes a lot more sense. I think it's a lot easier. I think it is easier for the property owners, since most of them don't, apparently don't petition for capital improvement increases, and it would be easier for the tenants to deal with, since it would be slightly larger increases on an annual basis rather than these big chunks coming in as capital improvement increases. So, I would, with the understanding that we're talking about the structure that we have on the table, I would be in favor of 100%.
And it's not too often that I agree with the mayor on questions on rent control, but I agree with you on that.
Okay.
Same here.
I think, I think we seem to have a consensus, except for one member of the council. So, that was fast. You were right. The next one is the one that you may want to recuse yourself of.
I do so, and I thank you for the opportunity.
And since this is the last item, if you were to go home, nobody would penalize us, so.
Oh, who knows what you may bring up there. I'll watch that.
And I would then, again, turn to Councilmember Snipper, who had a proposal on this one.
Yes, as I indicated the last time I chatted about this, tried to make it brief. I feel that there are a few things that we do for the tenants, and that this is an opportunity to continue to do something for tenants in the city. I believe it preserves the quality of our, the character of our city to have the kind of diversity we get by rent control, on the one hand. And then, on the other, we're talking about 300 units. That would be the better part of 300 units if we changed the exemption to three units, so that we exempted two- and three-unit buildings. That's a lot of units at the stroke of a pen, and however we sugar-coated it with phasing in and so on, the end result of it would be a lot of units completely free of rent control. This isn't like the MHP program in which there is some, there is some version of affordable housing incorporated in that. So, for me, and then there's a final, I raised it anyway, irritating thing for me in that, at least according to the figures I have, I see in our packet, we have slightly newer figures, that the breakout by wards for two- and three-units especially penalizes Ward Five. This was a bit of a surprise to me. I think of my ward as having sort of six-unit buildings predominantly, but it turns out we actually have a lot of two- and three-unit buildings in there. And so, disproportionately, it's close to 50% of the affected units, if we change the exemption to include two and three, would be in Ward Five. So, it feels like the rest of the council is saying something that, is approving something that doesn't really affect their constituents as much as it affects mine. And finally, I think that, for me, it doesn't really solve the problem, and the problem is that, as I see it, that some landlords can't make a go of it and need some kind of way to adjust rent control for them. A blanket, you know, a blanket exemption for people doesn't really address that, and doesn't address the needs of owners of larger buildings. You know, the guy who's got a five-unit or six-unit building may have exactly the same problems that somebody with a three-unit building has, and we arbitrarily pick a line for that. And whatever line we pick would in fact be arbitrary. So, I really strongly urge us to keep the current exemptions in place and not raise it.
So, you're encouraging us to basically continue to exempt on the basis of the number of properties a property owner owns, or are you talking about keeping it to single-unit properties?
The single-unit property kind of thing. We already changed the definition, which I supported.
Okay. And so, you're talking about exempting only single-unit buildings?
Well, we have that list of-
Right. Okay, I'm just trying to clarify.
You're right, right. That's the list.
Okay.
And I'm very strongly supportive of working on that petition process, so it can be streamlined as much as possible for those with simple cases, and if we need more elaborate procedure for the more involved ones, then we need a more elaborate procedure. But I know I've heard from landlords that one of the reasons they do not apply is because it can take a really long time, can be complicated.
I'd like to speak in support of Ruben's proposal. When we first talked about this issue, I think I put a very similar proposal on the table, which would be to exempt only single-unit buildings myself. The concern that I had is that we already exempt all accessory apartments, so anybody who has an accessory apartment in their house is now exempted and will continue to be exempted regardless of the number, well, I guess you can only have one accessory apartment. So, anybody with an accessory apartment is already out, even if they're technically a two-unit building. And so, we're basically exempting the people who aren't, you know, professional property owners. If you have a- If you have a building that you've bought for investment purposes, you are a professional property owner, even if you don't, you know, even if that's not your main business. And I would agree with Ruben. I think we're probably not doing enough to assist small business owners, and particularly small property owners in the city, in terms of giving them assistance with how they run their properties. And I think there's probably a lot we could do, probably without spending a great deal of money on it. I know that the city hosted a forum for small business owners that had somebody from the Small Business Administration there who was touting all the wonderful kinds of technical assistance that the Small Business Administration could provide for small business owners. And I think we could probably do more in terms of making that available to the owners of small properties. And also, although I can sympathize with the concerns that owners of small properties have, I have also run into an example that I think I talked to my colleagues about, of a property owner who purchased a property with a number of code violations in it, and came to me and asked to have her responsibility for fixing the code violations eliminated because she was low-income and wasn't able to afford to fix the code violations. Although I sympathize very much with her concern, and I think she had been talked into an investment that she really wasn't very aware of before she bought it, that we couldn't say, well, you know, we feel sorry for this property owner, and therefore her tenants should have to live in properties that don't meet code. And to a certain extent, we're faced with, not exactly the same, but a similar issue here, that there are people who have purchased buildings that they may not have been fully aware of what they were getting themselves into. But we also have a responsibility, not only to them, but to their tenants. And my assumption would be that over a very short period of time, even if we said that this law phased in as properties, as tenants turned over, even if we did that, that we would very shortly have all of these buildings not under rent stabilization. And I think we have to think very seriously about our obligation, not just to the tenants who are currently living in there, but our also obligation to preserving affordable housing. The county is now going through agonizing debates about how they're going to increase the amount of affordable housing in Montgomery County, so that not only that they don't make it totally unaffordable for low-income people, they're even talking about trying to make it affordable for lower, middle, and middle-income people. And here in Tacoma Park, we have a wonderful resource, which is we have a great deal of affordable housing. And I am completely behind any efforts to try and coerce the county into trying to help us with the cost of maintaining this affordable housing, because I think it's an enormous resource to them as well as to us. And I would also be amenable to breaks that we could give the property owners to maintain the affordable housing. But I just think that we need to keep as much housing affordable to as many people as we can. And so I would support Ruben's proposal, and I think exempting single-unit buildings is, I mean, we lose twenty-one rental units if we do that, twenty-one units of affordable housing that are no longer, eventually no longer going to be affordable. And I think that's plenty.
Well, I support the four unit and under exemption, and there's a number of reasons, and I've stated them before, so I'll just recap them quickly. One of the issues is the economy of scale issue. I don't think four is particularly an arbitrary number. It is the number at which other federal rules begin to apply. And I think that there's a level of sophistication when you get to probably actually six and higher. We started this conversation at five, and then dropped down to four, and then to one, and kind of back and forth. But there's an economy of scale in terms of how much you can sort of afford to support in terms of the rent control issues and the relationship and income to the operating expenses. Four is a number, you know, a smaller landlord can manage. I think also that this is the area that the city itself, that the community development manager has identified as being an area where we have a lot of landlords who have purchased property recently and have gotten into trouble. And in that sense, I think these are units that are at risk of loss to the rental housing stock. You can take four units and convert them into a duplex. You can take two units and convert it into a single-family house. I've seen several three-unit places that end up getting advertised as a single-family house for sale with an accessory apartment. So I think a lot of these are at risk anyway. And the last comment that I'll make is that, just as our last sort of straw poll that we took was dependent on the capital improvement process and the issue around the utility surcharge, one of the important issues here is that this is part of a program to sort of shift gears and go for a larger fee on these exempted units that would generate income relative to the operations of housing and community development. And even though we may not talk about what that specific number is tonight, it's definitely understanding that that is an important part of making this shift, and also that the transition occurs only for units that were voluntarily vacated, so that this doesn't have an impact on existing residents. Thank you.
I seem to remember Colleen putting a proposal on the table, and I just wonder if she would remind me of the specifics, and that was about an Affordable Housing Fund?
That's right. Because if these units come out from, that's what I was talking about coupling it with, as these units come out from under rent stabilization, as they are vacated and then re-rented, then there is a different fee associated essentially with the operation of that unit. And we talked about a fee of approximately three hundred dollars per year for those units. And that money would go into the Affordable Housing Fund. Now, by law, I guess, that has to be tied to the operations of housing and community development to meet the legal standard. It has to be used for the operation of the program. But we're already using other funds than, that we could do something else with essentially. So any monies that we raise, and that was the issue I was going to talk about, is any monies that we raised from this would have to be used essentially to operate the program, could be used for existing operations, but also small business development around the landlords and training and other things like that.
Well, I would like to see that proposal go forward. That was the proposal, I think, that Sarah was suggesting that we talk about in conjunction with our overall affordable housing policy, which we're planning to take up next week.
I don't believe it's been scheduled yet, but typically you've done it in July or early fall.
I thought that we had it, well, I'm meeting with the city clerk and with the city manager, but you had recommended in any case that we take that up as part of our discussion of the overall affordable housing policy, and I can, we can try and do that before that. Council goes to recess.
And if I can just add that I'm supportive of four with the idea that we would include the fee idea as kind of part of the overall package. That's what kind of underlies my support for four, is to make sure that we have expanded tools for supporting affordable housing. So if it's, I'm not sure of the logistics of kind of how to package it, but I'm just saying that my support for four units relies on us establishing a fee.
Establishing a fee or identifying a funding stream for the creation or preservation of affordable housing?
The fee itself would not provide any affordable housing. As a matter of fact, it wouldn't be enough to really fund much in the way of affordable housing.
The fee would come from the buildings with four units or less?
It would come, it would come from the buildings that were exempted from rent stabilization, whatever that number ended up being. But it wouldn't be enough to, by itself, fund any new affordable housing.
With other resources could go a long way, and it's not an inconsequential amount.
The challenge I have, and I just found this out from the city attorney's office this evening, is that there is, there has to be a link between the service that you're providing and the fee that you're charging. So I'd hate to eliminate a decision you make, or constrain any decision that you make regarding what property should or should not be exempt, for lack of a better word, to that specific revenue stream or funding source.
Because what you're saying is you may not be able to assess a fee.
You may not be able to do it the way it's being, well, the way we've sort of tentatively discussed it, but there may be other ways of identifying funding for further affordable housing efforts. The fee might not work just because the way it's all structured. And if we were unable to structure a fee, and I didn't, I couldn't come back and tell you that until September, I wouldn't want to misrepresent that. I mean, remember when we had the discussion about the rental housing license fee, it had been tied specifically to the cost of the service that was being provided? So you didn't authorize an increase in the fee to, for that particular activity. If you were to establish a fee for properties that were to be exempted from rent stabilization, they would be charging a fee for a service that they wouldn't...
For nothing, essentially.
Yeah. So there's that challenge that we have to look at in terms of how it might be structured. But again, I don't have enough information to go into a lot of detail. I just want to make sure that if you are in fact supportive of four units, that it's not solely because of the fee, because I'm not sure how the fee might be structured.
You're not sure if we could actually do a fee, so let's not assume that the fee is the reason for doing this.
I wouldn't want you to make an assumption that I can't verify is true. There are other funding revenues that we can look at, or funding opportunities that we can look at that might be applied more across the board, or specifically to exempt properties. But again, we have to do additional research on that.
Ruben.
Well, on the issue of additional funding sources, of course, we could do that now. There's nothing that prevents us from doing that now.
As part of the rent stabilization discussion?
No. It has been raised, the issue of supplementing the revenue from the fee with other funding sources. And of course, we could do that now. There's nothing that prevents us from looking for other funding sources to support affordable housing.
No.
And I'm concerned that the fee, even if it were more than three hundred dollars a year, would really be kind of a small pot of money compared to the amount of money that the landlords are going to be getting, just as a straight-off-the-top benefit. I really don't see the sort of commensurate argument. If there were, if the council had a policy to bring in an MHP-style organization to purchase or otherwise deal with these small units, so that they would, in fact, remain at least somewhat affordable, it might be worth considering. But to me, it seems like you're just throwing up your hands and giving away the whole thing. As for arguments concerning conversion of small units into single-family homes or duplexes, something like that, those kinds of conversions could take place now. If the landlords are having trouble, as they indicate they are, then there's nothing that prevents them from doing it now, and we have not seen an outrageous number of conversions. And I, you know, continue to note that the, continued, well, certainly not my ward, and I continue to note that the rate of condo conversions, for example, is no higher in Tacoma Park than the rest of Montgomery County. So these, I really don't understand, I quite frankly, don't understand the arguments. This is a tremendous giveaway to the landlords, for which they have done nothing, and the landlords who are in slightly larger units don't benefit at all. It's just an arbitrary cutoff here, from my point of view. I did want to mention that I chatted with Doug briefly about this, and he's pretty supportive of sticking with the current one-unit kind of system.
Back to the fee issue. I think what the law is, and I think it's case law specifically states, is that there has to be a nexus between the fee that is charged and the operations essentially that it's there to support. And there are other cities, even in the state of Maryland, College Park being one, that have much more substantial fees, two hundred and fifty dollars for a single-family house, for example, that then support their operations. So there are other organizations that are doing it. And specifically, in response to Councilmember Snapper, currently, there's a per-unit transfer on average of about thirty-six hundred dollars per year from landlord to tenant for every unit. So you're right, this is definitely less money that each of these individual landlords is then putting towards affordable housing, which, you know, to me, kind of relates back to sort of the economy of scale issue. And it's a lot harder, I think, when you're a smaller landlord with a couple of units to transfer thirty-six hundred dollars per unit, per year, relative to the market rate, given, you know, somebody operating in, you know, the economy here, with the land housing pressures, with, you know, assessments and those sorts of things. So it's just, the economic dynamics are just really different then for the smaller landlords.
Let me just take note of the hour, that it's about twenty of eleven at this point, and by my assessment, the council is essentially split evenly on this issue, and that we will probably have to take it up and continue to have this discussion anyway. So I would like to suggest that we not continue on at this point. I think the members of the council have had a chance to air their views, and we will simply need to continue to talk to our constituents and others and sort of see what we can do. But I have a feeling we're not going to come to a final decision this evening. So unless, unless members of the council are really, really anxious to continue on with this discussion, and I don't worry, Colleen, we're probably not going to make a final, final discussion, decision on everything next week either, so...
Yeah, well, because we're three-two now, we're not actually split.
Well, we, of the members of the council who would be voting on the ultimate rent stabilization ordinance, my assumption is that Terry would continue to recuse himself. We would be three-three on the other things. So I think we probably want to have some continued discussion on this, and I don't think we're going to resolve it this evening.
When does it come to a vote?
I think we have it scheduled like in late July.
And can I just get a clarification, to make sure that I understand, those of you who are in favor of one unit, you're in favor of one unit as a building with one unit, as opposed to the current, which is the ownership?
Correct.
That's the case of the...
With the accessory apartment and...
Well, with...
It's based on the building rather than the ownership.
That's correct. Because we made that decision, I'm assuming.
And that the units that are currently exempt, which includes all accessory apartments, would continue to be exempt.
Right.
So that even though an accessory apartment is, in fact, in a two-unit building, it would continue to be exempt. All right. So unless somebody really wants to continue to work on this this evening, my suggestion is that we've made a decision on one item, and we continue to work on the remaining.
Okay.
So there's nothing else we're doing.